All right. I want to thank everyone for coming and for being here on time so we can stick to our schedule, but one thing we are going to do first is have Dr. Nick introduce the process, but once he turns it over to you, you'll get your full hour, forty-five minutes of presentation, fifteen minutes of questions, and we're going to make it fair for all the applicants, so.
All right. Just to kind of recap things, so the meeting today is going to be the three presentations by the architectural firms. There is no public comment portion scheduled for the meeting today. At the end of the day, the board will then meet in closed session to review the proposals and make some determinations of where we want to go. The next step from there will be a special meeting on May twenty-fifth to approve a contract with the selected architectural firm. So for this morning, as Jamie said, the presentations are broken into forty-five minutes of presentation, fifteen minutes of question and answer session for the board. With about five minutes remaining in the presentation point, I'll just give you a -- there's about five minutes left. And then at the forty-five minute point, we'll just wrap it up so that we make sure we get that fifteen minutes of board question and answer. And then at the end of the sixty minutes, then we'll be done. So we appreciate everybody coming today. Hopefully, the drive was nice for you, and I will turn it over to the group from ATS and R.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you, board members and administration for recognizing ATS and R's commitment to educational architecture and excellence to invite us here. We have a wonderful group from our firm here to talk to you along with myself. I'm Dean Benega, uprooting the project manager, and you remain contact for all the projects. I'm a partner architect. Hudson has a special place in my heart. Thirty years ago, my first project as a young architect on a college was Bethel Lutheran Church, a little institution up by the Octagon House. So, boy, I was -- I drew every detail. It was a very special time, so I've always had a special place for Hudson. I spent my career basically building schools in your state of Wisconsin my whole career. I built Bayport High School over in Green Bay, Howard Swabaco, Watts High School, New Mifflin, all the schools. We just finished something in Arcadia that are now working with Chippewa Falls. So I'm very well-versed in the codes and the systems in your state, and really have enjoyed my experiences with that. We hope to show you today that ETSR is the most innovative firm for you. The innovation doesn't stop when you start with design, but it goes past design into how can we maximize every dollar that you have to build twenty-first century educational architecture for now and future, for teaching and learning for the students and the staff. You have such a wonderful opportunity, a once-in-a-generation opportunity. And so, we've studied when you're done. We think you've done a great job, and congratulations. By the way, it's an amazing accomplishment to have the confidence of the community and all the students. We've studied it, and we've tried some things. So we've done some things here that might not be completely right, and we haven't had a chance to spend enough time with you. But we've tested the waters a little. We've done two designs. We're going to kind of focus on one of them today. One of the two designs we ran to go sure for the high school, but we're going to focus on one. So here's my team.
Well, I'm Nick. Dean's introduced himself. I'm Paul Erickson. I'm president of ATS and R. And we'll be on the project with this wonderful team we have, and we're really excited to be here and work with it.
My name is David Barone. I'm also a partner with ATS and R. Been with the company for twenty-one years and practicing architecture for thirty-two years. And I've spent my life focused on education design. My connection with Hudson is early work in the fall of two thousand and four on some of the original planning and facility, the community engagement process that we're helping with at that time.
I'm Pete Lacy. I'm a British architect. I'm also an associate partner at ATS and R. Been with the firm for about seven or eight years, and I'll be the dedicated designer on the high school.
Hi, I'm Sarah Fox. I'm an architectural designer with ATS and R, and I'll be the dedicated designer for the middle school.
I'm Blaine Parkos. I'm the director of our mechanical engineering group and also an associate partner. And I'll head up a lot of the engineering aspects and coordinating our teams with the engineering side to make sure that we give you guys innovative types of systems and keep your environment comfortable.
And I'm Ron Spolden. I'm the landscape architect with ATS and R. I'll be involved in all your projects, dealing with all the outside amenities.
And I'm Tara Rydell. I'm an interior designer and associate partner with the firm. And I listed at the Twenty-First Century as educational specialist, and I'll just be sharing a lot of the research we do, a lot of things we bring from other clients, research we see from across internationally, across the country, just to make your school definitely know.
Can we maybe share our mic so that the audience can hear? I'm concerned because I don't want to make you shout, but we're not here, so maybe pass this through. We can check if we're able to. Maybe come up. Sure. I'm sure.
Might need to play a little musical.
Hello. Hello. Is that better?
Very good.
Is that good?
Okay.
Hello?
Sure. Can I sit down?
Just need to speak.
Yeah. ATS R specializes in the school client. We're built for the school client. We have all the disciplines in our company: mechanical, electrical, technology, interiors, site, food service, theater design. So we bring everything to you. We've -- ninety-eight percent of our work are schools. We've been in business continually for seventy years, so we really have a track record of commitment, excellence, dedication. Clients, return clients is the best way to see how good a job you're doing, and we get a lot of repeat business. We also have quite a history with Hudson.
Yeah, a few comments on that. Am I shouting, or is this loud enough? Use the mic, all right? Usually, that's not a problem. I shout a little bit too much. The history with Hudson, as Dave mentioned earlier, in two thousand and four, we worked with a committee of about, I would say, about fifty people, and it was really the first step in putting together a master plan for Hudson's schools. And I think we came up with about thirty-seven options at that point and narrowed it down to a few. And actually, one of the options that the committee came up with is what the referendum was about. This is going back twelve years ago, believe it or not. And then in two thousand and thirteen, we were hired to come in and do a very succinct analysis of the existing high school, looking at the envelope, looking at mechanical systems, and all the retrofit and deferred maintenance that was needed. So we are very well-versed in that, and that's the history we have with Hudson, which is quite detailed.
Okay, so before we jump into the potential design solutions, we just wanted to share just some of the kind of themes we're seeing in educational facilities. You know, if you look up at this image, it's kind of a typical image you see across the country. It's a double-loaded corridor. You know, the spaces all look the same. Students are sitting in chairs and tables facing the same direction. You know, this was designed for another time. It doesn't take into account all the group work that's happening today. It doesn't take into account all the mobile devices that students are using in schools. And so, really, you know, we're seeing the world around us change, and so we're really seeing a shift in what the educational facilities look like also. So, you know, a simple thing, and one of the biggest pieces, you know, I'm an interior designer, and I think, you know, the furniture is so crucial. It's what everyone interacts with the building. It's what you sit in. It's what you feel. It's what you actually touch from the building. And so, the furniture can have such a huge impact on the educational facilities. We're seeing different types of furniture. Not every classroom needs to look the same. The furniture doesn't all need to be the same within a classroom. This is a pilot, a classroom we just did with Saint Louis Park Schools. We're working on some furniture standards with them. And so, they're just kicking the tires. They've got some tall tables in back. All of these are mobile, flexible, some lounge pieces. But the point is, is that students don't all have to be sitting in the same thing to be learning. And in fact, it's better because everyone has different needs, different preferences. People are different sizes. The other piece that we're really seeing is variety of space sizes also. You know, we need places for students to work together. We need places for students to work on their own. And so, we're seeing, you know, still the places where students can come together in traditional classrooms, but then more and more group spaces, individual spaces. So this is an example of, you know, a classroom essentially, but it doesn't look like the classrooms that we're all familiar with. Breakout spaces right outside the classrooms are really important, where students can work in groups, find a space that's comfortable for them. The spaces for the individual, the cave spaces, the place where you can focus, get away, get a little quiet. Places to work in groups, both enclosed with a little privacy and then also out in the open, just different-sized spaces. We're seeing a lot of what we're calling learning stairs in spaces. It's a space where students can work and hang out, but you can also bring a large group together. It's almost like an auditorium or a tiered seating area, where a presenter can be down at the bottom and can have a drop-down screen. Maker spaces are another big buzz we're hearing a lot of. This is a concept that's actually being built this summer at Southwest High School in Minneapolis, but we're actually creating a series of garages that students or teachers can check out. And it's just that space to get messy. It's flexible. There's no rules. You can do whatever you need to do. The other big piece is flexibility. Flexibility both in walls with garage doors and openings and connections to spaces, and the flexibility of the furniture and technology. This is in Burnsville. If you notice, they don't have a front of the classroom. There's screens all the way around that students can take over and work in groups, or you can just sit and listen to your lecture, but whatever way you're facing, you can see what the teacher's presenting. So flexibility and variety are the two big pieces to remember.
So to support these twenty-first century learning spaces, especially in a retrofit application, we tend to have to get innovative with our mechanical systems to fit within those spaces. Sometimes, traditional VAV systems won't work in these buildings. So then, we end up going to systems similar to this. This is an induction displacer. You might see an old unit ventilator, what we call a unit ventilator, in a classroom along the perimeter. This is a replacement to that, but is a very highly effective ventilation system. This is kind of a demonstration of how it works. This induces some outside air into it, and then induces room air and supplies it low in the space, providing a very effective ventilation system. When you're delivering it low in the space where the occupants are, you're getting all the pollutants from the kids actually rising up and being exhausted at the ceiling level, so you have a very good indoor air quality. And again, this is heating mode for that same system. Chilled beams, another type of system that we tend to use in areas where, in retrofits where we have very little ceiling space. These only take up six, eight inches of ceiling space, you know, below a joist or in between joists, and we can push some outside air into it and very effectively heat and cool those spaces. Variable refrigerant flow systems. These are more refrigerant-based system, but again, very effective for working through retrofit-type spaces. Ice storage. When we look at your big plants, a lot of utilities will provide great rebates and incentives for doing systems such as thermal ice storage. It offsets your peak demand rates on electrical and allows the utility to give you a lower rate on your electricity used to chill and cool your building.
When we designed Marshall Senior High School about eleven years ago, the local -- oh, I'm sorry. When we designed Marshall High School eleven years ago, the local utility company, we were able to obtain over four hundred thousand dollars in rebates based on some of these strategies.
And fan walls. You know, using fan walls or fan arrays, we can actually gain five to ten percent efficiency in your fan system, plus allow it to have some redundancy. There really isn't very little cost increase to go with a fan array over a single fan. But again, it's another innovative solution within an air handler to allow greater energy efficiency and also some redundancy in your systems. Energy recovery. These are more and more being pushed by the energy code requirements. These days, ASHRAI, which is a standard that we typically design by, that dictates a lot of the ventilation rates, and their latest energy guidelines, they require that anything over forty percent outside air have energy recovery, which it really makes sense to do that at that point because there's actually a lot of payback for that, to recover that waste energy. Rather than just exhausting air out of the building, you can recover that heat from it and preheat your outdoor air coming in or precool it a little bit on the hot days of the summer. And welding exhaust recirculation. You know, you think about those industrial spaces. A lot of times, we're just exhausting air out of the building. Well, you have to make up all that air that's being exhausted out from those spaces. So these days, we have welding exhaust recirculation. So these things have multiple filters in them and filter that air to a point of where it's the same as what it was when it came into there, you know, the air that's being pulled from the space, and pushing it back into the space, thus saving you from having to reheat all that outside air, especially when it's twenty below zero outside.
So we're in the business of transformation, so we thought we'd show you a few of the projects that we've worked on, where we've taken old high schools and other schools and introduced new additions and renovations to bring the spaces up to date. So this is Minnetonka High School. You can see, this is the original entrance. It's kind of, there's an entrance around here somewhere, but where exactly is it? So we added this rotunda as an entrance, really makes a mark, shows exactly where to go, and it's also a secure entry. You can't, once the school's in session, you can't get into the building without going through the office, so it adds that layer of security. This was the kind of dark cave that was the original entrance. Opened it up, brightened it up, becomes a big, wide-open circulation space. Gets a bit of school branding going in with the M for Minnetonka. We could have an H for Hudson in a similar kind of space. The school was a maze of corridors and courtyards, and it was built over a period of time, so there are different eras of buildings. So part of what we were doing was clarifying the circulation. We took out this glazed link there and opened it up. We were able to pull the structure in, to separate the new structure from the old, introduce light from a higher area, and this becomes a main circulation through the school, clarifying the circulation spaces. And all the student services were feeding into this one central main street. These dead-end areas, which were just maintenance nightmares, became spaces that were useful for displaying art, for places where the students liked to hang out. And then, a dark, outdated auditorium was transformed with modern technology, color-changing LEDs to add mood to performances, and breathing new life into the gymnasium spaces, introducing additional daylight, refreshing the floor finish and the bleachers. And the work still continues with Minnetonka. We've got a long-lasting relationship with them. This is a project that's happening this summer. They were looking at renovating their science labs. So science is changing. They're getting all these different types of science going on, and they need the flexibility in their science labs to be able to cope with that. So we've produced this movable furniture. The services, gas, technology, electricity drop down from the ceiling. There's glass linking it through to the corridor so that people walking along can see the exciting things that are happening inside the science lab, and it can be reconfigured, breakout spaces outside.
And then, this is just a quick example of the media center, so it's going to hopefully be a several-phase process. Just last summer, we were able to just replace some finishes and totally replace the furniture. So this was phase one. And then, if you go to the next one, please. Just outside the media center, too, there is several banks of lockers. And if you go to the next one, please. This summer, they're going to be clearing those out because they're finding students aren't using the lockers like they used to and introducing more collaborative space. Oh, and this is another project we're working on this summer. This is Cassin, Mantleville High School. This is a before picture, the outside, and just a totally new, updated look. There's an addition with an auditorium, common space, more student spaces, media center renovations, and just keep going through. But just showing the in-process transformation. This is an image of their commons.
So the fun part, the important part, the part we can't wait to talk about, is you. We hope we've established some baseline. Oh, yeah, I get so goofed up. Not used to sitting down. So we're excited to show you about you, your possibilities. You have so much opportunity in front of you for, we always say, look out the window, not in the mirror. The last time they designed something for you, it did a very nice job, but you have an opportunity to design for the next generation. And it's a very serious situation that you can take advantage of, that you can help students. They say the jobs the students have that are in school today don't exist. So you're designing for an educational delivery model that's going to change, that needs to be flexible. So we see opportunities on your site. We've done a design that is ten thousand square feet less than what you had in the bond referendum information. So not only do we want to show you we're innovative in our space design and our architectural design and our mechanical design and our site design, but we want to show you we're innovative with our budgeting. We want to provide high-quality systems and materials, but we also want to be smart with our design so that we don't waste any space, so that you can have, our idea is if we're at ten thousand square feet less than the bond, so you can build more spaces. That's our theme. And we've got a couple suggestions, like a black box or drama classroom in the back of the auditorium, and a scene shop, and some scene storage, and another dressing room, and pull the music out so it's connected, and put practice rooms and offices between the music back there. So through smart design, we're able, I think, to complete the diagram. Instead of putting the band room in the old cafeteria, we can use the old cafeteria and tie it to a new space that we're going to show you that is part of the cafeteria. So it all starts with the site. Ron's the site expert. You can see how we're placing the new Main Street concept. We kind of straightened it out. We make it a student mall, student commons, along the center in the gray. And then, we're going to talk to you about a prototype design, another innovative way to save you money. We've lowered our fee if you select this type of design, because we've already built it. Down in Austin, it's a STEAM school, okay? So that they were looking at very innovative ways. University of Minnesota helped us design that to look at the future deliveries of STEAM and how you can arrange an architectural piece. So you'll see that in here. That's the prototype part. We gave you two fee options. If you choose the lower fee option, you can save more money and you can build more. That's the theme here. So we keep the existing, and the remodeling is very similar to what you've proposed because we haven't had a chance to spend a lot of time with you, okay? We got the gym extension for three gyms. We turned the varsity court. And another innovative thing that we would like to do for you is create a top-loading gym, a gym where you come into the bleachers from above instead of from below. Keeps the crowd up. You put the bathrooms and the concessions on the second floor. We'll show you some images. So again, the top-loading gym is an innovative item. You have your administration and your media center. We have another innovative thing called a raider porch, okay? It's an extension outside the library. It's a patio. It's a porch on second floor. It's a place for students to go outside and learn, to meet, to talk. It's an extension of the cafeteria area where kids could eat outside. So learning stairs, black box, raider porch, top-loading gym. We hope to show you today that we're more innovative and can do more with your dollars than the other firms you're going to talk to today. So our cafeteria extends here. We keep the cafeteria down in here. Another thing is, why not keep your parking lot? Why spend so much money on moving the parking lot? Let's do a design that keeps the parking. We'll put new batuminus on it and fix all the potholes and make it a nice new surface, but let's fit the stadium into this area here. You'll see in the other designs, we did explore up into here, but we don't think you have quite enough new land, but getting some practice fields up into there. Get some parking back up into here to balance out some of the lost parking up here. Create some islands and green space, a very large drop-off here. The main entry's here with drop-off in the back also. The stadium here, the seating here, the plaza here, visitor seating there.
Also on your site, there's some things to point out with that stadium. I mean, the impact that you're going to have is going to be some more impervious areas. So we'll be looking at the stormwater aspect, how to mitigate that with the stadium being a synthetic turf and all that. That usually typically has to be rate control. You don't have to mitigate what's falling there, but because those fields drain so rapidly, we do have to find some means of storage and all that. Usually, you're using some of the base underneath the stadium, different techniques. The other thing we'll certainly be looking at is your bus parent circulation and how to maybe really make that a little bit more efficient and functional, you know, a lot better than what it has been for you. Some of the things to point out here, too, a quick on the aspect of this, not only are we going to be, you know, looking at the players' aspect, you know, just the orientation of how that field, here, one thing, why it's tilted a little bit to the northwest is that your fall sports, you know, typically you want to have that to the northwest-southeast orientation. Your spring sports are more true to the north-south. So here, we're kind of getting a little bit of both worlds. The one thing with the concession buildings, too, the aspect of the parents, you know, putting in their volunteer time. It's situated where they'll have a view of the field when they're putting in that, you know, they're just out there watching the game, too, so. The other thing, you know, another thing we'll have to be working through will be tree mitigation, especially if we put into play those northwest fields in the back corners, quite a bit of trees in that area. The city ordinance will require some, you know, type of tree mitigation and so.
The view into the sun is another deal, where it's nice to face the east instead of, yeah, face the west instead of the east so that you're not looking into the setting west sun. So putting the bleachers onto this side will help that. Actually, it won't. We put the gatehouse and plaza near the drop-off so that, as you can see, near the drop-off here, you can utilize this drop-off for coming into the community plaza, Raider Plaza, with the gatehouse here. Ron mentioned the windows for the concessions. We always like to design the concession area so that the people working can watch the game. I always feel bad, I have seven kids, and my wife has to work a lot for kid sports, and I do, too. But I feel bad for her when she can't watch the game because she's working in the concession. So this way, we like to take that into account with the drop-off there. So you've got a great opportunity, track, synthetic field. We've done a lot of synthetic fields that we're going to show you. The plaza here, we think, is an important component. When you go to get a hot dog, you shouldn't miss the game. You shouldn't be going somewhere. You should be on a journey. That's part of the experience of watching the game. So we like to put the plazas very interactive with the event. We think to create a ceremonial entry, some pillars. You can put donors' names on them to help pay for them, some fencing, red iron gates to keep the secure, but instead of just a fence, you get a community pride, a sense of place. It's a nice part of the entry into the high school itself, and so you know when you've arrived. The ticket's in the front, the bathroom's in the middle. But we think it could be a real special place, and it really fits kind of nice when you tilt it a little bit. Again, we hope that's innovative, to tilt it a little bit to keep the track and field events up in that corner. It opens that up a little. You can talk about that. Benilde?
Oh.
Benilde St. Margaret.
Oh, Benilde St. This is a project we've done a few years back, synthetic field. Actually, this one actually was placed over a degraded wetland that we had to build on top, but here, we're looking at both, not only, you know, their field location, but being an inner-city school. an inner-city school, the concerns for the neighbors were, you know, were getting pushed on both sides. So we took a look at, oh, just the sound quality, the lighting aspect, and just what the players were going to be, where they'll be at, most concentrated at. On this whole, I guess, site, we reoriented their varsity baseball field and with the stadium and made it a real nice complex. It's all, you know, tightly situated, all interacts well together.
So real similar to yours. You got neighbors, the neighbors are very important. We have to control the light level down to one-foot candle at the property line. We have to control the sound. We put a little governor on the sound system so that those kids, when they warm up before the game, they can't turn it up quite so loud. So we're very sensitive and understanding of neighbors and building in a context. So just showing you a few slides, this is a high school, $100 million high school in Pennsylvania we did with the full stadium. This is in DeKalb, Illinois, where we did a turf field. So let's get into the building. You can see the, the main entry, the administration below, the media center above, the extension of the gym, the turning of the varsity court, the track around that serves as a top-loading gym, the two-story, 32-room classroom. So your, your current proposal had 28 classrooms. This one proposes 32 because we're taking four more out to help the others. We're taking four more classrooms out of this area to bring more natural light around into this area and tie that in together. It also brings natural light into here. We have a Main Street here that ties this building directly to the ninth-grade center. The second floor will also tie to the ninth-grade center, so no longer will you have to come downstairs from this area, come over here, but this walk, sorry, it's hard to turn and talk. But this walkway here is actually at the second floor, and that becomes the top-loading gym portion. So those ninth-grade students or the students that are in that second floor on that side don't feel detached anymore. We're trying to integrate the school, trying to create a Main Street, a community hub where they sell vegetables and they dance at night, you know, the Main Street. So we're going to use the library as the cafeteria, okay? And we're going to use your cafeteria as your cafeteria. And we're going to put the new band room up here, and we're going to put offices for the instructors here, so they have natural light. There'll be practice rooms and instrument storage. So we're creating a music suite here. Here, we're going to put a black box, we're going to put a scene shop, we're going to put costume storage, and we're going to put some dressing rooms. And so we're going to complete the suite back here for the fine arts group. So that's where we hope to be innovative. So we're going to flash through some images. You can start to see it in Axon. The new front view, it's all new front, and all the money goes to the front of the building, basically. So you create a new vision and a new super envelope. See a lot of brick, glass, and metal. Low-maintenance materials, the entry, that's the raider porch outside the media center. So you can come from the cafeteria, sit outside, you can come from the media center. It's accessible space. Yesterday, we would have been sitting on it when we were meeting all day for this. You got your fitness room. Fitness rooms are changing. Innovation, we're putting turf inside of fitness rooms because a lot of fitness and training and recovery comes on to the synthetic surface, not just pounding weights. We hired a family of twins. They did some dancing for us. I don't know how to say 15 people. So here's your top-loading gym, okay? So now we're standing up, Rob. The crowd goes down into the bleachers from above. It's the running track, it's a top-loading gym, the varsity court's turned. It's a real exciting community diagram. You can see the fitness room directly connects to the, to the gym. We have a lot of openings, so we get natural light in. My neck hurts now. Okay, we got to keep going here. Media center, second floor of the Main Street. Some other media centers that you've seen, that we've done. Administration down below, this is the Main Street here, the cafeteria's to the right. So very open. We like to use the building as a teaching tool to expose the structure, some of the mechanical, some of the technology, put a window into the head-end room so students learn. Put signs next to water that says, every time you use this, or you've saved this many bottles of water, obviously at the drinking fountains. But really, the building is a teaching tool. Here's the old library that would turn into the cafeteria off of Main Street. So you can see the existing, the serving here opens up the existing library or the existing cafeteria. Some of the character of the Main Street. This is that prototype building we built that could be utilized if you would like. It's part of this plan. Second floor of the Main Street. So that's basically the plan of that, and Kara's gone through some of that. Let's go back to the PowerPoint. So it's very exciting. Paul?
So with the middle school, in review of the RFP and just through our tours of the building, we felt that, no, this is just one idea, that, but the goal is that we don't infill at the existing garden. We felt that this is a very special place. It's so connected and intertwined with the media center. And it, keeping it, maintaining it, even extending it, could help promote sustainability for the students and even become more of a learning space in the future. How do I use this? This? So, so the existing garden would stay, gym would go on the south side of the existing gymnasium here, and the classroom wing or two-story house would be out to the south. So it's the media center, obviously. This is some other examples of an exterior, outdoor, teachable space. This is a very schematic drawing of I.J. Holton at their labs. This is another school where they, they had planters for teaching and lecture space. And with putting the, the house out here on the south, now again, what I started saying in the beginning about this being one idea, we did play with other options, you know, putting the additional classrooms to the north side, maybe turning, turning the wing and bringing it into the garden a little bit more. Those are still options. No, this isn't something that we feel is the answer necessarily. But what this does is that it gives us the opportunity to design a new entry. One thing that we noticed in the tours was that the entry was very quiet, felt that it was maybe just stuck on to the end of the building. And this would give us the opportunity to create something that's very iconic, expand on school identity and branding. This is I.J. Holton again. This is Rushford Peterson, new school under construction on Minnetonka. Peter had worked on the branding of their schools, and they, they reincorporated this sort of design into all their, was it elementary schools?
Only elementary schools, yeah, had that kind of wing wall with logo.
Yep. And so here's our house wing. There's the entry, gym, practice court, and second floor. Again, this wing here, it's an extension of this corridor, and I think there are probably ways to shorten that and maybe incorporate more into the additional wing, or the adjacent wings of the school. What's that? Oh, okay. Okay, these are just some breakout spaces. All right, that's it.
And if you think, and if you think that's exciting, how are we going to get this done? Okay? Because, you know, it has to be done, right? And the community's expecting success. So we're going to go through this here. You know, step one, we've got the master schedule from 2004. I can't wait to dig into it currently because what we want to do is check everything. You know, they brought up the science innovation at Minnetonka High School. What's even more exciting about that is we found space for 400 more students at Minnetonka High School without adding a square foot to that building. And that's really what's a chain reaction that can occur with proper planning, proper understanding of the scheduling. Planning for your needs, the design shretts, we're going to be collaborative, we're going to bring things. These are ideas. These aren't solution, I mean, these aren't the final things, but we're going to work together with your teams, bring it all together, build consensus. We've got consultants, like Dean said, we're built around the school client. It's easy for us to coordinate with our consultants because they're all in our office. Here's the schedule that we worked up, okay? This is how it works. And hopefully everyone can read that. No, just kidding. But there are some very important things. This is going to extend over a quarter, course of about three years, and there are some very specific things that need to occur, starting at the middle school, getting that done quickly. We'd like to see that in the ground this fall. We'd like to see the construction start this fall so that it can be ready for the students next school year. Okay? I know it's aggressive, but we feel that we can do it. We've got a lot of history, we've got a lot of understanding, and I know that we've got a great team on your side too that knows a lot about this project. The high school, a little different. We've got some different ideas on that as well. And what we've done is we've looked at the extending that. We'd probably be bidding that in February of 2017. So there's a little more design work, a little more timeline on that, little more time to draw it up. It's a larger project. We have broken it down into some basic, primary focuses as far as what needs to occur and when, so I'm kind of excited to share that with you. Here we are. And, you know, that's done by dollars, it's done by square footage. We try to set a journey that the contractor can succeed on and get things done when they need to get it done, so that there aren't any surprises during construction. In your handout, there's a renovation guide, I believe we attached into the handout that we gave you. And that, that's basically sharing all of that information with your community too, so there aren't any surprises. So here we go. There's the, there's the great idea that the team has been developing. These are the main benchmarks. There's our timeline. Let's get going. First things first, let's get a staging area established. Where does that go? Let's locate that, and that has to extend during the duration of the construction. It looks like if we need some additional parking, we should start to develop the north lot. Okay? Get that going. With that, we also want to do some utility relocation to preempt the eventual additions at that location. Same thing on the south side. This is where really we get going. We're going to start building some new square footage right away. Okay? That happens right away, March, April 2017, under construction, because we need to create some space for the students to go so we can get back into the interior of this building and do some renovations. So we're looking at the classrooms, the gym addition. We're bringing the innovative mechanical components in, we're putting those into the proper locations, getting that chiller and that cooling plant, the heating plant, up to speed for the long haul here. Okay? 2018 is a busy year. You can see the little balls down there, a lot of things starting up, a lot of things completing that year. That's where the lion's share of the money's going to be spent, I think, in 2018. About half of the available funds for this project will be spent in 2018 fiscal year area. So stadium started, we're doing some interior remodeling at the locker rooms, the auditorium, we're getting some classrooms at the northwest corner. We start to reduce the, the staging area because now we're working just on the second floor of C2. We've got, we're opening up classrooms on the first floor at that point for school year 2018. And then that allows us to go into the east wing, which is that, what I'll call a quagmire of classrooms, that somebody should have never designed that way with those extended hallways back in there with four. You know, you go in there at passing time, it's wild. Anyway, that's where we're going to renovate that and turn those into the proper types of teaching stations for the, for the lab spaces. So we complete the second floor, then we can get remodeling on the west wing, and finally finishing it up and rolling out the staging area, basically, school year 2019, it's a wrap. Doesn't end there, we continue on. Nine, 10 months later, all the way through the warranty period, we're going to be looking at it, we're going to be meeting with you post-occupancy evaluations, get contractors back out there, make sure everything is correct. Again, back to the schedule. You know, this is a very detailed schedule. We spent a week on it, but still, it's extremely detailed based on the thoughts and the experience that we've got. Done this many times, even to the point where here's your draw schedule. Whoever's interested in how much money is going to be going out per month, those are millions of dollars. See the red area? That's the hot area of what I would see this, this project going with. Like I say, we've done it a lot of times. Yeah, I don't know if you noticed on the top, it said Radical Renovator. That's me. Okay? We worked on this building here, we built a new high school on top of a high school in Pennsylvania. 250,000-square-foot addition, that's what the building plan looked like to start with. It was crazy. 10 additions, you know, it was nuts. What do we do? Save the best portions of the building, the anchor tenants, try to get student cohesiveness, coherency into the thing, basically erase most of that building, save the valuable pieces, build a brand-new high school on top of it. Guess what? The kids were still in school during this three-year process. Also, safety and security. We're at it. Yep. Okay? Doesn't get done easily. We document that, the contractors see it. Thought it'd be fun. This is a thing we brought up in 2004 for your group, and what was exciting about it is basically, we're looking at 3,000 more square feet with this current idea and the dollar amounts. This was just for the additions. I'm shocked, this was the study dollars on the top, and this is where the budget that we're working with today. That makes me feel good, makes us all feel good because we helped estimate that years ago and how it's still intact. Same thing with the middle school. It's just amazing. We're at 8.3 with our study, we're at 8.1 available funds for the additions here. We're just talking about the additions. So accurate estimating, these are projects that we're very proud of. You can see most of these, all but one, basically, the bids came in less than the estimated costs. When you think about these estimated costs occurring three years prior, it's pretty amazing that we can do this successfully. But it is what we do, and we take it very seriously. On the average, we're about 2% under our estimate to the bids. We think that's right on.
You got 10 seconds, Paul.
Okay, fee. I would need you to sit and get to the mic. Fee schedule. In your proposal, you have the fee options. We provided two options for you. One is a basic fee, and the other one is utilizing some prototypes that the team has talked about. Just so you see, going back one, oh, that does work. The in-house services, everything you see in black is in-house ATS and R services, and that's really how we're able to provide such a good fee for you on this project because everybody is in-house. What you see on the other highlighted, the Acoustical Civil and Structural, they are consultants of ours, Structural's been with us since 1952, and the Civil Engineering. If you have a civil engineer that you'd rather use, we're open to that as well, but we've, we've provided and covered that gap. Other services that we do include in-house are the food service design, the estimating, the specifications, and the athletic site design. So that just gives you an idea of, of the big picture of it. The next piece are the two options. And the first fee schedule that you have in your proposal is the referendum basis and the concept plan, or this curved plan that you saw in your RFP, and that's kind of a new idea, new design, and then also really anything else you come up with or we come up with together, that is kind of the first fee option that we have. The second option that we have, which is the lower fee, introduces a prototype into the two-story kind of classroom pod. And it doesn't have to be the one we've shown, we've got about a dozen other ones that we've done over the years recently, that's 21st century education, that we can work with you and modify slightly, but we're trying to get the best value of the dollar for you so that you can, you can spend that money for the kids for learning. And that's really the gist of the whole thing.
Great. Now we will move on to the next phase of the, of the presentation, which will be questions from board members.
Yeah. Member Brown, go ahead.
Many times in a bid spec process, fees are bid tightly, and a lot of times it'll happen, demo becomes a focus in lieu of salvaging existing infrastructure. How do you go about ensuring that you're reviewing and saving as much as the existing infrastructure as possible? And my question's more specifically is around mechanical-electrical.
Sure. From, from a mechanical-electrical standpoint, you know, we, we spend a lot of time out in the field checking out your systems, what's existing? What's existing, what's there? And, and we have our facility study from 2013, which gives us actually a lot of information on your systems. So as we've reviewed that information and as we do a further dive into your buildings, anything that is salvageable, that's, that still has a lot of years of service left on it, you know, things of that nature, we will reuse it wherever we can. We want to save those dollars and reinvest those wherever we can. So we will, as part of our services, be doing that. And it is a very important factor of, while we're doing our review of and throw a deep dive into the building.
As an architect, I keep a close eye on him because every dollar he spends more, I don't get for the building. So I keep a close eye on him.
Follow-up just quickly. What we do is we send our entire team out to the existing building. We do a thorough analysis of the existing conditions. And I mentioned earlier in 2013, we have, we had done that already with the envelope and the mechanical systems and some of those pieces. But that's really the key. And in your contract, you ask for an existing conditions-based drawing. And so that's really important for us as well to make sure that, that we're on target for that fee. So we want to document what the existing is and, and then identify what that infrastructure is that we can save.
Okay, I have a question. You've, in your RFQ, you mentioned a lot of previous works. And then that was kind of said again in the RFP. It looks to me like the project that has the most similar scope complexity would be Nishamani. Is that right? And, and tell me about that. And does that include your most innovative work? Or would you say another project was your most innovative?
Well, I'll start with Nishamani because that was, that was kind of mine. And that was quite a project. It was, you saw the, the plan there and it almost looked like, well, it was a maze. And keeping the kids in there while the construction was going on. And the bids really, you know, it was 75 million and the bids came in 2% under. And it was, it was not the most creative or innovative 21st century design because they did implement just some features that they wanted to provide. They were a little more traditional, a little more conservative delivery and approach. But as far as phasing and sequencing, it was one of the greatest challenges and really a very successful project out in, in the Langhorne, Pennsylvania area. As far as innovation.
Yeah, well, there's a couple more, too. I mean, you know, when we talk about getting into an old building and an older building, the Oswego High School, I mean, that's innovation. I mean, we, we started to create things called instructional hubs. We're bringing the students and the teachers together in natural eddy spaces where, where the students congregated anyway. We created, we did the decentralization of the media center with that particular facility. It's amazing what you can do with an older facility. Some of our most innovative things come out through our conversions, our renovations of older facilities. But decentralization of the media center, what did that do? It brought technology to every student in the building. And we created nodes, seven of them in this high school. That no longer do you have to go to the media center to get into a computer, okay? It was a total interactive experience with students, teachers, just natural, natural things.
Mr. President?
Yes, Sue.
Okay, I have a question. This is related to the middle school plan. I'm curious to know a little bit more about your idea of having the additional building not tangential or connected to the current building. It's more like a pendulum. And I'm wondering what your thoughts were about that idea. Maybe it's just easier to build an addition if you can get all the way around it. I don't know.
Well, that's a great question. We like to look at the balance of a design. So, we felt if you enclosed that design towards the gym, it might close the building. And there's so many teaching stations that need natural light that might get darker. So, we didn't not connect it. We put a, we're reusing the entry. We're just turning the entry towards the street. We're putting the parking out front, rearranging the bus so that the entry is more visible to the, to the road. And then there's a bridge across the top of that entry that would just be a short, you know, we could have lockers in there. We could have a student breakout area in there. But it's an extension along that main corridor in the school. So what we see is it does two things. Not, nobody wants to make that building bigger in the future. But if you put your addition and tie in that thing, what are you going to do in the future? So, we've designed it so that if another house had to come on to the other side, Sarah showed you a picture. You got the infrastructure and everything right there to naturally grow. You got a lot of land there. And we would like to keep that garden, keep the sunlight coming into as much of the building as possible because studies have proven over and over again that natural light promotes learning. And so that was our main idea is to promote natural light and keep the building thinner instead of keep closing it in and making it heavier and darker like a interior of a hospital. Yeah, it's just one idea, too.
Mr. President?
Yes, Sandy.
I understand that when these are, when the contracts are bid out, when you get the bids, that there will be a portion of the money that is like a contingency fund? Okay. Can you tell me what your belief is about what the use of a contingency fund should be? What kind of expenses would be thrown into that contingency fund category?
I'll let Dave, my estimator.
Great question. The, all projects, I mean, especially projects of this, this complexity, require contingency. And we would expect, and we've done a lot of analysis on this, too, what change orders are. There's coordination type change orders because many of these things, this is the first time it's ever been done. And that's not uncommon on, on a project of this magnitude. So there's going to be some of that, okay? So if you have a 5%, 5% or 6% contingency, I'd expect about 1% to 1.5% of that to perhaps be spent with that. The other things may be enhancements, okay? Now that we've, we've been able to accomplish this and we are able to basically finish another space, okay? We are able to extend a quality of finish, perhaps, that allows ease of maintenance, okay? So it can be spent that way. The other one is basically totally unforeseen conditions. You stick a shovel in a ground in a site, in a, in a, on a school site, you might be surprised what you see a lot of times.
I don't oil change.
Well, exactly. So it, literally for unforeseen. So there's some coordination, there's some unforeseen. And there's also some truly added value type of things that could be spent on that. It can cross over from construction to furniture, equipment, special features, technology, absolutely.
Okay. All right.
It really is a project contingency is how we view that.
I just, just want a clarification on the, the fact that a contingency fund is not to be used for bids that are purposely low to get the job. And then the contingency fund is used to make up for that.
That is a, that is a dangerous slope to slide.
All right.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Lynn.
My question relates to communication. One of the things that I'm proud about the approval of this referendum that just passed was the community engagement process. What, how do you see the communication on a go-forward basis with owners as well as the community?
We pride ourselves on working with staff, students, community, board. We can go in a closet and design anything. But without your help, we can't make what's right and special for you. Because you can, as you can see, you can do, go many different directions. So, we like to use graphics. Very similar to this presentation, we'll have community input sessions. We'll get the design to a certain level. If we'd get this job, we'd right away meet with your staff. We'd test a couple of these plans. Obviously, we'd meet with you first and do a kickoff. But we'd go right to the staff and we'd get their feedback. We'd meet with each group. In a high school, there's 40 groups. Sit down at first for 20 minutes with each of them. Say, hey, how you doing? Here's a plan. What do you think? What works, what doesn't? So we start to learn. We work as a team. We'll do that with the community. Show the pictures. We'll break up into groups of five, do a pro and con workshop. Boy, you find out if they hate it or if they like it pretty quick. And it's pretty nice. So we believe in interactive communication, open dialogue. And as architects, I think, when you look at our work, it's, each project's very different because we're very open-minded and we use our talents to make your project special instead of just redoing what we've done in the past.
I have a follow-up to Lynn's then with regard to your fee. Because along the lines of communication, so you've got a prototype design and you've bifurcated your fee such that if we use this design, it's 3.5 million. Otherwise, it's 3.8 million if we do something else. At what point, when you start with this design and you get the input from our community and our experts in our schools, that, does it no longer become your prototype? And then your fee bumps up to the 3.8 instead of the 3.5?
Well, I, I can answer this and Paul can answer this. But as a designer, you know, every time I've done a prototype, it's changed a lot. Okay? But there's a lot, too, of a building. The structural bay dimensions, okay? The mechanical placement and origin. I mean, all these things in a design, you got to meld together. So in a prototype, a lot of that's been thought out, worked out. You can actually go to that building and really kick the tires and find out what you like. But bottom line is, we will change it. You can see in our proposal, we did a campus design, which is a round to kind of create that, that college front atmosphere. And then this one is the main street. Well, the main street allows us to use, as Paul said, this prototype classroom grouping of 32, 16 each floor. Or we have others. So if you can keep it within some of the parameters, we work very hard for you. And we're not going to, we're not the kind of people to say, oh, no. You agreed on that prototype. We are flexible. We ask some, for some respect back, not to just totally throw it out and start over. And if you have to, we can work on that, too. So it's, it's a relationship.
Okay. Do we have any board members with one more question?
You're, you're doing both of these buildings to the LEED guidelines, right?
Yes, I'm a LEED accredited professional and we do design. We actually talked to you about designing beyond LEED because if you study LEED, LEED isn't good enough for schools in some areas.
Okay.
So yes, definitely. Very important part of educational design.
In your paperwork, you say that New Richmond is in progress yet. Is New Richmond, are you still working with New Richmond?
I still work. I, they texted me this morning, are you at Hudson?
And Burnsville. There's a note in here that says it was done in 2013. But it's, but then another note says it's still in the construction phase. So you're still working with Burnsville?
Phase one, phase two.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. President, may I just ask one more quick one?
If it's a quick one, sure.
It's a quick one. It's related to the topic of safety. I was wondering what your perspective was about safety for children with like, well, it looked to me like a curtain of glass on the gymnasium additions. And then I have to admit, personally, I love the idea of the outdoor, a place to have lunch on the raider porch. But it makes me really nervous either for escaping students or, you know, and I know you would have a more secure fence or something. But I, I don't know where that concept comes from because we got them through the security doors and now we're putting them out on a porch where they could have a little rope they made in some class, macrame and get out of there.
Well, that, that's a great question. That, the beauty of design, as we'll talk about it, you know, if the group feels that there's some components that need to be tightened up and changed, please understand these are conceptual models and it's sure easy to make a lot of glass because it's, it's free in the model. But we are very careful of how much glass we put in, what type of glass. We use only tempered glass in all of our schools and every piece so that there's no shrouds of glass that breaks into little pieces. So, we're very conscious of that. We are very, we say we're in an airplane looking down now. We're at that kind of level of detail. So we'll definitely respect what you would like for that.
All right, final 30 second. What's your, in all of these projects that you've worked on, what's the major, biggest conflict you've had with an owner or a construction manager on a project? And how was it resolved?
That's a good one for the president. Paul's our president. He gets to deal with all that.
You know, I think one of them might have been a construction manager's idea of the schedule and how to break up a contract and to get the job done. And our idea of how that could be done. And I think, you know, you're going to have some of that where you have two parties coming together and each come from a different area and different side of experience. And I think, you know, the, the conflict was, well, we had an idea and they had an idea. And I think the solution was that we all sat down and worked together on it to get a package that was put together that satisfied the owner to get a completion date on time. And actually, you know, it wasn't our plan and it wasn't the CM's plan. It was a combination of both that really achieved the goal. And then the owner had a few things to say about it, too. Well, yeah, we don't really want it done at that time. We want it done earlier. And so we worked that out. So, you know, that, that's something that just comes to mind right now of, of, you know, something that, that was, we were at odds a little bit and then coming together and working together to, to get it solved.
You had mentioned all but one of your projects came in under, bid under your budget. How many of those projects went over the time period of when delivery of final product was promised?
I would say that 98% of our work is, well, 98% is in education and 98 to 99% come in under budget. Because we understand.
But what about on time?
On time?
Yeah.
Well, 100% of them come in on time. I don't remember one job in the last 10 years that we haven't, we haven't opened up on time for a, for an owner. Definitely.
Thank you. Any wrapping comments?
So, we appreciate everybody's time today. We know this is a very big decision, obviously, for the school board, for the school district and the community. As we said earlier, the, the next steps will be later today. The board will be deliberating on the presentations. And then I will be getting in contact with the architectural firms over the next few days. And hopefully we can get something wrapped up here by the middle of the week. So we, we thank you again for coming and the presentations. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll take a 10-minute break. The next interview starts, I guess, at 9:15? All right, we're back in session. And I'll turn over to Dr. Nick and he'll introduce.
Well, welcome, everybody, for coming today. Representatives from, from Hoffman Architects. Just want to give a little bit of a rundown. As we talked about in the last session, there won't be any public comment portion to this meeting. But it'll be broken into two phases, basically 45-minute presentation. At about the 40-minute mark, I'll just kind of give you a heads up. There's about five minutes left. And then 15 minutes of question and answer session with the board. And we'll try to hold pretty tight to that. At the conclusion of today's presentations, the board will be going into a closed session to kind of review the presentations and hopefully set a direction to kind of review the presentations and hopefully set a direction for, for where they want to go for architectural selection. And then in the next couple of days, Tim Erickson and myself will be in contact with firms to kind of work through that contract. We do have a tentative special meeting scheduled for May twenty-fifth, which would be Wednesday, to approve a contract with the firm. So without any further ado, I'll go ahead and turn it over.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I noticed you got started at the clock there.
Yep.
So, good morning. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. We've spent a lot of time over the last two months, actually, preparing for this presentation here today and we're excited to share those thoughts and ideas with you. We're even more excited, actually, to continue that conversation with your input, instead of us just doing it isolated. And we've ultimately wanted to create a design here that starts to reflect what we have heard, but truly what we're looking to do is create your vision and your goals for the students, the staff and the community of Hudson. We are gonna be talking a lot about your project today for the next forty-five minutes. Instead of talking about us, we wanted to make this about what we're gonna be doing with your ideas and what your goals are. So with that, if you could just, it sounds like, hold the questions to the end, it sounds is, is the course of action, we'll start with some introductions. Myself, I'm Sam Stotts, I'm the principal in charge and one of the owners at Hoffman. Started at Hoffman in nineteen ninety-eight, actually working as a superintendent on a Two Rivers School District project and worked with a number of different school districts throughout those last eighteen years. That includes Monroe, Appleton, Berlin, very recently just closed up with an eleven-month walkthrough on that one. And actually, if you're not aware, I was a senior project manager for the building we're sitting in here today, as well as the senior project manager for the middle school addition that was completed. So I'm excited to have the opportunity to continue the relationship with the Hudson School District.
My name is Jody Andres. I'm the K-12 market leader for Hoffman. I'll be the senior design lead on this project. I've been crazy enough to be doing K-12 schools for twenty-five years now. It's kind of a niche that I found. I love doing it. I love being here. I love working on this project too, as well as, as Sam said. So I'm just, I'm just happy to be here and, and share ideas with you today.
I'm Catherine Crookshank. I'm a senior project designer and planner at Hoffman. And I've, this is my eighteenth year at Hoffman, my twentieth of designing schools. Rivercrest was certainly one of my favorite projects, because you challenged us to be innovative and it would be a great pleasure to have the opportunity to continue working with you on your next projects.
Good morning. Mark Bulkey, I know some of you. I also was part of the Rivercrest team and am glad to be back here. I have thirty-five years of experience on all site-related issues on, on many of our projects. I've worked for Hoffman for twenty-four of those years and have worked on a lot of schools. Many, much of my work over the past twenty years has been on K-12 educational projects. I do want to let you know that Hudson has been on my bucket list for a while. I have two school projects that I really want to finish before I'm retired, so I'd love to, I, I just wanted to let you know that. I, I hope we can work with you. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Mark Hanson, Director of Sustainable Services at Hoffman. I've been with Hoffman sixteen years. Before that, Executive Director of the Energy Center Wisconsin. I was part of the Hoffman team when we designed Rivercrest Elementary. And just as a reminder, this was the second LEED for schools, gold-certified school in the country. And so there's some pioneering work done in sustainability in this project and we certainly will do it in the projects coming up.
Hello, I'm Liz Douglas with Heniman Engineering. I'm a mechanical engineer and an owner at Heniman. Heniman is an engineering firm that specializes in large projects, especially with very complex phasing issues such as this one. Thanks.
Good morning. I'm Clark Brenner, also with Heniman Engineering. I'm with the project manager for Heniman Engineering on this project. I've, have thirty-seven years of total experience working in the, in the field and I've been working in the K-12 market since nineteen eighty-one. So, thank you.
My name is Scott Grholsky. I'm the president and owner of Point of Beginning. We would be the civil landscape design firm. We, the, the team that I bring to the table, myself, Rich Riggs and Dan Poplinsky, who are not here, have just pushing thirty years' experience between all of us on K-12 athletic projects. One thing that gives us a unique perspective, I believe, is myself and Rich are varsity coaches, so we sit on the other side of the table a lot. And just to let you know, the type of projects we've worked on, when Jacksonville Jaguars were in Stevens Point years ago, Rich worked closely with them for all their athletic field development needs, so I hope, hope to help you out.
So now that we've done the introduction, shuffling of the cards here and the microphones, I think that worked out okay. There are some other team members that we don't have here, actually, today, that we wanted to just remind you that are in the RFP. We've really tried to tailor this approach to exactly what you're gonna be looking for and some of those additional team members that we feel are gonna be necessary as part of that are Schuler Shook is going to be our theater consultant. They're a renowned consultant, actually, throughout the country, is one of the best in the country. Arrow Audio is another consultant that we've worked with. The projects that you see within our proposal, a lot of those auditoriums, we're with Arrow Audio with, as a partner to us. XRG Analytics is going to be doing the energy modeling. They actually, Steve Carlson over there, actually did this school as well and it's, this school is outperforming the energy modeling, so we'll make sure Steve updates his information so it challenges us a little bit more. And additionally, finally, Stevens Engineering, Angela Popehagen here in town. We've worked with her considerable amount with this project and we will be bringing her on as, as a liaison to Point, Point of Beginning's efforts as well. Okay, so there was my mistake. I forgot to flip the slide. Now I'm done with my mistakes. So we want to quickly go over what you're gonna be hearing today. First and foremost, this project is the number one priority for our office and Heniman and Point of Beginning and all of our consultants. This, this project is the most important thing coming through and we hope that today, what you'll see is that our experience that you'll see and the backgrounds that we've had, this project truly does fit right in our wheelhouse. We've got a lot of projects that we've done, large high school additions, large high schools, two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-thousand square feet, very complex renovations and occupied spaces, multiple projects in a summer and/or a duration of time for one district that need to be done in phased construction. And I hope that what you'll see today is that all of that background is going to provide this ideal fit for you and really make us that team that can deliver this and beat the expectations. And on top of that, we've also got that experience that we know what the effort is gonna be that's required to get this completed. So we've put forth our most competitive fee and hope to have the opportunity to continue to work with you with that fee.
So, I'm gonna talk just a little bit about some of the design ideas that we have. As Sam mentioned, we've been, in our office, we've been going over this project for at least the last six weeks, if not longer, if you, if you go back into some of the planning stages that we talked about. So there's, there's a lot of things that we, we've generated, a lot of ideas that we have and unfortunately, we only have just a little bit of time to share those with you today. So, just wanted to walk you through a couple of them. What's up on the screen right now is kind of our conceptual first-floor plan. You know, it's, it's doing a lot of the same functional things that I think that you've looked at before with connecting the two wings of the building, incorporating the new commons space, some locker commons space, incorporating the academy concept into that. And, and along the right side there, you see, you see a lot of our, our design goals are closely matching with, with the ones that you've already identified and we're, we're totally on board with, with meeting, meeting those goals with this design. But a couple of things that we looked at and we'll, we'll address a little bit more specifically as we go through this are, are things like, you know, where, where that main entrance really ends up being, where the administration is gonna work best for this facility, having that health and fitness center in a prominent location that might be more accessible to the community. What are some different creative ways that we can maximize and the utilization of this space with, and still get some of the, the things like this wonderful daylighting into the, into the interior spaces and really make that work in a creative way? So, again, you know, the concept is, is a little bit different than, than what you might have seen in the past and it's actually a little bit differently than from the RFQ to the RFP that we submitted. And the reason for that is, like I said, we've been working on this and, and we got some great ideas that, that we want to talk about. So, the second floor, you can see that, you know, we are looking at the two-story academic wing addition. That, that really hasn't changed too much, I think, from what you looked at. I mean, the biggest, biggest challenge, I think, here, as, as you all are aware of, is, is it's a limited site and we want to be able to maximize the utilization of space on this site. And I think the two-story academics addition is, is absolutely a, a good solution to look at for that. And then you also see things starting to develop here, like, you know, that freshman academy in the existing facility on the second floor there. We, we think that, you know, there's, there's absolutely some ways that we can be successful for creating that, that, that HSD twenty-twenty-five goal throughout this facility. So, one of the most important things that we kind of identified and latched onto right away is just the opportunity here to kind of re-identify, re-image this whole facility. What's, what's up on the screen right now would be the main south entry as, as we kind of, as we kind of thought about it. You really, I mean, this is, this is just an absolutely wonderful opportunity to come in and just re-image this whole building. Because it is, it is a limited site and you're trying to maximize that, it, it's really gonna be important for us to look at all sides of this, this building. Every facade of this, every, every side of it is gonna be important and, and entry is, is just part of that. Safe and secure entries are absolutely linked to identifiable entries. You know, when people come onto a school site, they want to be able to see, where do I go? They don't want to be wandering around the building going, like, I can't really figure out where the main entrance is. Do I go here? Do I go there? So you see kind of an idea for, for that. And, and on the back here, because we're utilizing the whole site, you really have to start to think of each of those other entries too. So off the existing commons there, you know, you looked at it before, maybe as a, a music area, we're thinking that you might want to keep that as kind of a main rear entry into this building, because there's gonna be parking, there's gonna be functions on the back there towards Oak Street. You want to start to address that and make sure that people can, you know, between the, the receiving area and the tech aid area, you know, where, where do we go to enter this building on the north side? Twenty-first century learning concepts, we're, we're absolutely excited about integrating these, these into the whole facility and, and this is one that we, we kind of latched onto, again, really quickly. It's called the learning stair and we're gonna incorporate things and ideas like this as much as we can throughout the facility. And the learning stair is really kind of a, a really simple thing when you think about it. You need to have stairs between levels in a building. We're gonna have a two-story addition. Why not look at doing multiple uses for that, for that element? So the learning stair is, it incorporates the circulation part of it, but expands that to use it as a collaborative and flexible learning area. You can have lectures on there, you can have students collaborating on that space. They sit there, they can stand. You can do informal lunch settings on that. It really starts to kind of open it up and really can become a feature of the facility. So you see it kind of right next to the existing library in that commons space there and it really starts to, to set off that and, and really our idea is to open up that whole commons interior space. So there is kind of a seamless flow between floors and, and, you know, again, it, these are just elements that people come in and say, wow, that's, that's, that's really interesting. That's, that's different. That's unique to Hudson schools. This is, this is what, what it would look like if you just took a slice through the, the main academic addition here. And this, this really gets to the, the concept of, of maximizing the utilization of space. So, you know, courtyards are a great way to get natural daylighting into a facility and they're a great way to get views, but you're, you're basically paying the cost of building that outdoor space, because it's enclosed by exterior walls on all sides. The only thing you're really not doing is, is putting a roof over it and conditioning it. So our thought really is to start to look at some of those things as maybe more usable or, or, um, um, dedicatable space inside. So here, and you can see that kind of interior courtyard becomes your locker commons. Getting some of those lockers out of that main corridor, I think, is gonna alleviate some of the congestion, but you, you look at this and if you bring in the clear story windows like you see here in the commons, you still get that natural daylighting in there, get the benefit of that, get the energy benefits of that, but you're still able to use that space on, down on the, on the lower floor. And you get the natural daylighting into the classrooms, it really starts to kind of, like I said, maximize that, that utilization of the space. Collaboration areas in the existing west wing, you know, there's, there's, again, some great opportunities here, kind of along the same theme, you know? We, we see these as, as really opportunities to create some interior exciting spaces while still getting daylight in there and still being able to use that space. You can see here, the, the roof just gets popped up. You put in the, the clear story windows, there's lots of natural daylighting coming into the state, space, but, you know, down below, it's, it's an open collaborative space with the, the same twenty-first century learning furniture and fixtures that you've, you've been discussing all along in there. So you can move the space around, use it in some different ways. And you can see up on the plan there, it really starts to take a look at dividing up those spaces maybe in a little bit different way, so you can have some different sizes, some different adjacencies and, you know, they're, they're, they're separate, but they're also connected to allow you to flow back and forth between those spaces. As far as science learning environments go, you know, again, we see this as a great opportunity to start making your science facilities and science curriculum a little bit more like what the kids might be seeing in college or, you know, even in the real professional world. It, it's really as simple as creating the infrastructure in a way that's flexible enough to move around that lab and allow you to reconfigure it. So you're looking at things that aren't necessarily permanently built in place. We can do utilities in the ceiling where you can have electrical and gas hookup. They can change the lab environment around to see, to suit whatever curriculum that, that's being taught in the facility right now. And, you know, up in the right-hand corner, that's Berlin Middle School, Middle School, but still you can start to see the movable tables, how the infrastructure is around the outside there. But, you know, the key here is with all your academic spaces are flexibility. And we wanted to touch just a little bit on, on the typical classroom. You know, I think the intent here is not only to, to build some of these great new spaces, but also to update and rehab some of those existing classroom spaces that you have the opportunity to go through and do. So, you know, here you see a lot of the same concepts, again, the twenty-first century furniture and fixtures, the movable furniture, all incorporated into this. You've got some great budgets to, to kind of update all those things that, you know, at this time, which, which is, which is obviously great. But our intent would be to, you know, open up these, these spaces a little bit more, create that connectivity between the collaboration areas and the classrooms. And, and, you know, there's really, there's, there's good ways that we can do that in terms of limiting sightline, you know? If kids are sitting down, obviously, they can't see out of higher windows, movable walls, those kind of things. But, you know, it also gets to the concept of, of how we actually construct these classrooms. You want to do it in a way that's gonna allow you the flexibility down the line to change these if we have to. I don't think any of us can predict what's gonna happen in education in twenty years. So we want to make sure that as a facility is constructed, that, you know, if things do change, you can change your facility to match those needs. And we are gonna have some opportunities to have extended learning areas outside. On our plan, we actually show kind of a, between the west wing and the new addition, a smaller outdoor classroom courtyard area. On there, it's indicated that there would be future expansion. You know, you'd asked us how we, how we'd build onto this building in the future, so our plans do kind of indicate that. But, you know, we want to take it full advantage of those outdoor learning areas. And you have some right now that maybe, you know, aren't as used and aren't as well-developed. So the, the key there is making sure that the, the amenities, the, the teaching tools are out there to allow you to use that as, as an outdoor learning space. And then just, again, an opportunity here to, to create kind of this whole new facade for the south entry and south end of the building. What's proposed here is, this is right across the, the gymnasium face, the existing gym and, and the gymnasium addition. We actually thought right away that the, the health and fitness center should be right there, prominent, accessible to the community. There's actually ways that we can, can create that space and create the running track above, around the gym and allow you to use that during the day for citizens, for community members and still keep that separate and secure from students and the rest of the school. It's, it's absolutely a possibility that we can do there. But, you know, there's just this unique tie here to be able to tie your athletic facilities inside to your, your fields and your stadiums outside here. And, you know, wouldn't you be, love, love to have your, your, your visiting schools be sitting in the stadium, you know, in the visitors' bleachers and looking up at your facility and going, wow, that's just a fabulous facility and, and just envious of what you have here in Hudson? So, you know, this is, this is kind of, you know, an image of, of what we were thinking along those lines. So, you know, the community has access to the, the fitness space. It's open, it's welcoming. It really starts to create that. One of the last things I want to talk about here with the high school, just one of the, the design challenges that we noticed as, as going through here is, is gonna be your, your existing gym and expanding that. The dimensions of that existing gym are gonna make it a little bit more challenging than what we would normally do in a new gymnasium space to, to create a good venue for your two-thousand seats. And, and what's up there really starts to look at, you know, where that, that whole performance court takes place. We're, we're putting it closer to the, the commons as would naturally be, because that's where the, most of the, the spectators are gonna be coming into the facility. But it, it's, it's gonna be a combination of fixed and movable seating that allows you to kind of create this, this stadium feeling. We would love to be able to do something maybe on all four sides of it, but, you know, dimensionally, again, you're just challenged there. So, you know, this, this, how you expand that gymnasium is gonna be a pretty critical element of how this, how this plan works and you need to be careful and, and think about, you know, how that, how that performance and how that's gonna work ultimately in the end.
The existing high school has some mechanical, electrical and plumbing systems that are approximately sixty years old. And as we move into this project, we have the opportunity to add new systems to the addition and also integrate them with upgrades to the existing systems with the goal of creating cohesive, reliable systems that will perform and serve you well for the next sixty years. In addition to providing systems that are integrated, reliable, maintainable, lasting and flexible, another major goal of the HVAC systems will be energy efficiency. This building, Rivercrest Elementary, achieved an Energy Star rating of ninety-two, which is very admirable. And as we move into this project, we'll hope to approach that goal, knowing that we have some limitations, working with an existing building envelope, existing insulation, older windows. We'll still hope to, to approach a very high Energy Star rating. So with these goals in mind, we evaluated several different overall HVAC systems that, that we could incorporate into this new project. And there were three systems that were most interesting to us and we scored them on a scorecard with seven different criteria, including first cost, maintenance, energy efficiency, longevity, acoustics, indoor air quality, and ranked them with low numbers being the most desirable. And based on that ranking, we did evaluate a geothermal system and unfortunately, that was not the, the one that came out as the most favorable. The most favorable option was a VAV system with hydraulic reheat with some, some select vertical ventilators utilized and a major upgrade of controls throughout the entire facility. This concept also incorporates new high-efficiency boilers and chillers. These high-performing HVAC components will be carefully located to work within the physical constraints of the existing building and also carefully located to support the challenges of construction phasing, which Clark will address in a moment. And then in addition to the, the overall base systems, we also evaluated several additional[1785.71] HVAC design features that could be used in conjunction with these systems. We looked at things such as photovoltaics and chilled beams and displacement ventilation, and really got excited about one option that Mark will share with you more, which was
I'm going to discuss how we are going to try, how we are going to sequence the HVAC work on this project. It's not an easy task, but I think we've come up with a solution that will not cause interruption or delay in any of your academic or athletic schedules. Phase one, which is the new addition right here, will, will be constructed from the spring of 2017 to the June of 2018. In that new addition, we'll install a new central chiller and a portion of the new boiler plant. Phase two, which is right here and right here, will be completed during the summer of 2017. So they don't coincide with, exactly with phase one. And so we will not have the new chiller, chiller or boiler plant available or ready for those phases to be complete. So what we will do is install new chill water, hot water mains down this central spine. And we will connect back into the existing chiller plant and then connect those two, that main to the new phase twos. And so we will use the existing chiller plant for phase two. In phase three, which is going to take place during the spring and summer of 2018, which is up here, we will connect the new main into the central chiller plant from the new addition and abandon the old chiller plant that is in the back of the school right now. Then also, we will install new boilers in place of the steam boilers back in the old central plant and backfeed into the existing systems. We will also then connect all of phase three into this new chiller main. And so all of phase three will be on the new chiller and boiler plant. One thing that we need to talk about in phase three is the completion of the remodeling of the gym. At the end of phase one, we'll have this portion of the gym, gym complete, but we really want to have a single system that serves that gym to be most efficient. So what will happen is we'll complete portions of the work in phase, phase one, and then finalize it all in phase three. What that allows us to do is to have a complete gym ready for use by the fall of 2018. From then on, through the fall of 2017, we will connect in those capped-off mains and begin the work on phase four of the, of the project. And then that following summer, we'll connect in the mains on the other side and connect into phase five. Where we were looking for is a preferred location for the central chiller. And we were looking right now on the roof of phase one. And one of the reasons for that is by locating centrally, we have a lower cost of distribution. The piping costs are reduced considerably. Also, a central chiller takes advantage of the building diversity. We get the chiller for the right size for the project, allowing it to be sized appropriately for the, for the project. And how we will accomplish that is we'll go that through the energy modeling. And also the preferred location for the boiler room for the first phase, we're looking is on the second floor. Again, for the central location and also it provides a way for us to cross-connect into the existing boiler plant.
So I'd like to briefly discuss some other design themes in our other engineering areas. In IT, our design will support cutting-edge 21st century learning. There'll be obviously great support of wireless, audiovisual capability. In the area of security, I think our design approach is perhaps exemplified by what you see when you walk into the entrance of this school. So I'd encourage you to take a look at that. And even better, come back on a school day and see how that, that entrance way is designed and how it works. In the area of electricity, a key theme is, is how we will match up our lighting design using new LED technologies that weren't available when Rivercrest was done, at least not at an affordable price point. But it will be very much a lighting design that complements daylight. So it's daylight first. And this room is a terrific example. I'd also encourage you to visit a classroom here. See how there are views. There's light and the electric lights then, when you need them, complement what's provided from daylight. So that's the, that's the key theme there. Terms of water, water's become an important item, both in general environmental responsibility, but also in your budget. And again, low water flow fixtures, very similar to what was done here. Durable, low-flow fixtures, saving on the water bill, saving on the maintenance. And that goes toilets, urinals, labs, so on. In the area of photovoltaic, we are recommending that the school district strongly evaluate or consider a large solar systems at both schools. Where our recommendation would be for about 300 KW, kilowatt, at the high school, about 150 at the, at the middle school. This is first and foremost, an important educational platform. Renewable energy jobs, whether it's manufacturing, install, maintenance, is a fast-growing area in the upper Midwest. And it supports STEM, it supports technology, it supports, it supports the social sciences. To pay for this, rather than you needing to put money out of your budget upfront, we're recommending you consider third-party participation to help in the financing. As was done at the Rivercrest Elementary School, that image you were just seeing is Rivercrest, is the Darlington, not at Rivercrest, the Darlington Community School District. That was 156 KW system. How this would work financially is shown in this graph here. In the graph, you can see on the, on the red line, that is your cash flow by year. And basically what it tells you for the first 15 years, for 20% of your electricity, rather than paying it to XL Energy Utility, your electric provider, you pay it to the solar provider to both get your electricity and to pay off most of the system. At year 15, you have your first option at a buyout of residual value. If you take advantage of it at that point rather than later, you can see at that, you've got a, a, a payment there. And after that, every year, you now start saving energy because you are no longer making your monthly payments on electricity. Your cumulative clash, cash flow is shown in the blue line. And you can see that it just surges. The overall life cycle economics of this is an internal rate of return of 9%. So if any of you can get IRRs on any investments better than nine, you should go get them. But this is a good one. And, and I would add as a final comment, this system should last well beyond 30 years. Thank you.
We will have our theatrical consultant review all the systems that make the magic happen behind the scenes, the rigging, the AV systems, and give us recommendations for what needs to be upgraded, replaced, and with what equipment and so on. We also have safety concerns about access to the stage. It's pretty dark close to the stage, and it's easy to trip over the steps. If there's anything that can be done about the chairlift that goes down to the orchestra pit, I'm sure you've explored it, but that certainly is a trip hazard that we're concerned about. We would also take a look at, next slide, the control booth. It's a very tight space, and it's also awkward to get into because the only access is through the tiered seating area. And as soon as you open the door, it opens into that trumpet balcony, which only has curtains keeping out the sound, so it doesn't, from the cafeteria. So we would recommend enclosing that trumpet balcony with a solid wall that would keep the sound out. That would also provide more space for equipment because some of it is currently kept in, below the tiered seating area, I think in band costumes or something. So there's constant back and forth of technicians during a show. And it'd be great if everything could be kept in one place. And then we would also consider moving the sound mixing console down onto the house floor, either in the center where there's already electrical outlets or off to the sides. We'd also like to look at aesthetic upgrades. Go back a bit. So perhaps changing the color scheme. Here we're showing adding Raider Blue, but the color is really up to you, what you would like to do, and replacing the carpeting, looking at the seats, and staining the woodwork a lighter color so that it shows up more visibly than it currently does. Adding plywood veneer panels below the stage and also above the proscenium arch to enhance it. We're not entirely sure what to do with the ceiling itself because we rely very, very heavily on our acoustician to do an analysis of what's most appropriate for the clouds. But once he's done that, then we can start to play with what could be done with the ceiling. So here we're showing you examples from four of our other auditoria. And you can see how the lighting can be integrated into the clouds and the HVAC diffusers disappear into the dark spaces to be completely unobtrusive. We would also like to pay attention to the entrances to the auditorium. There's the main one, but then there are also two side corridors. And this isn't what it would finally look like. It would tie in with the decor of the commons in general. So we just wanted to note that we'd pay attention to that also.
Okay. We're going to talk about the site a little bit at the high school. First of all, I want to condition this on the fact that we have not had your input yet. So everything you're seeing is ideas that we put together. But if it contradicts anything that you have thought of or put together to date, we certainly welcome that, the opportunity to start engaging conversation with you. And it's a critical part of the process. Since we got involved with, got, received the RFP, and even before, as part of the RFQ, we started our due diligence. We've already, we've met with the city twice. We've gone to, Minnetoka was brought up several times as a, as a project that we should look at. We've already been there and looked at it, toured it with the athletic director. We've prepared several concept plans for you to look at. And we've created a list of critical first steps that we put in the, the proposal. I probably won't have time to cover today. But in our meetings with the city, we, we did try to take our ideas and incorporate those into our concepts and starting to organize the site with the building, the athletic fields, the parking. And some of the key things that we derived from the city meetings have to do with parking and bringing the traffic and the parking closer to Vine Street and maximizing that. They thought that was a great idea. So we'd like to do that. They also talked about the importance of stormwater, which we will address, and then also neighborhood engagement. So we, we fully intend to come up with a plan with you to, on how to engage the community in this process. I'm gonna let Scott talk a little bit more about our concept plan.
So as you can see, the, the number one thing when we become engaged with a school in replanning or repurposing their site is safety. Then the number one is traffic, you know, pedestrian and vehicular traffic. So what we really try to do, our number one goal is to set, try to separate those as much as possible. And if you quickly look, I'll use my pointer, we've created two separate parking lots, but are linked. The one, this, this parking lot right here will be utilized for bus drop-off. One, the main entrance holding to the main entryway. As the students and buses pull in, the students could turn left and, and park in the parking lot, and the buses can stack. As you can see, the students can be dropped directly onto a walk and go directly into the school. The secondary parking lot is a parent drop-off. We create a parent drop-off. So we've moved your entryway. And again, we have not had a traffic study done to verify that these locations will be acceptable. But by eye, and you can, there's really good vision here, parents can come in and drop off. By moving the parking lot to the front, we were trying to minimize the amount of traffic in the back. Just quickly on the athletic piece, you know, I, I really think as tight as your site is, a lot of people may think that's a negative. I think it's a positive. I think the, the feel and the atmosphere that you will have as it relates from your weight room and your school and the vision, and as that ties in to your plaza, is going to be really unique. So we really liked the way this came together. As you can see, we pushed, put softball back into your practice area. And our tours with Ted Scholes over at Minnetoka, it was a really unique design they had with their baseball and football and turf. That would work here. We feel that would work. We'd have to do a little more, you know, design work, but that, that was a really a neat concept. And then as far as stormwater, that's the fun part of it. It's, it's going to be challenging, but with the combination of underground and basins, we are confident we could make that work. We, we are just finishing a project right now in Kekana that, you know, both Hoffman and Point of Beginning have relations with. We both work for them. It is a brand-new football stadium, brand-new soccer stadium, both synthetic, brand-new synthetic softball field, extremely tight site. What you're seeing here is the, the graphics that we will put together for your project, very similar. It, it helps in visualizing your project. And then in the end, such as your potential baseball field that could be a dual turf or softball, this type of graphic can help in fundraising. And we, we really become comfortable with helping schools manage those campaigns.
And that type of graphic actually can be done with the building as well.
Speaking of tight sites, the middle school site is extremely tight. You have about two pockets of space where you could put something. The north pocket, we think you can reserve for some future date because the south pocket works a little bit better in that you can put your new gymnasium right next to the existing gym and a two-story addition, which would give you two houses connected to the other houses. We would use the same elements and brick so that it blends right in and doesn't look like an addition when all is said and done. One of the things I'd like to point out is that the office has a sloped roof, which slopes in the direction of the addition. So we're wondering about how to shed snow and rain and so on. So if we go on to the next slide, you can see that we left a small courtyard there so that it can deal with that. And it has the positive effect of being able to preserve the windows in the conference room and the office. You may have noticed, we like windows a lot. So as far as the house is concerned, it's organized pretty much like the other houses with the same elements, a larger science room, some standard-sized classrooms. On the first floor, we do have to have a smaller classroom, which would work for special needs because we need to replace the offices that are displaced by the corridor running through. The exact size and shape of this, when we have a survey that tells us exactly where that curved drive is, we can tweak and massage it to get, to maximize the space that's available. So the next slide shows then what the collaboration space would look like. It would be the same on both houses. With more houses, you will have fewer students in each house, I assume, and therefore fewer lockers, and therefore would have more room for furniture for collaboration, which would be a positive. The biggest challenge we gave ourselves was that during the tours, Ann mentioned that she really needed a third house. And the question was, where would we put it? And could we fit it within the budget? So we looked at several options. There was that north pocket, but that would have been a substantial addition, we thought, couldn't be justified in terms of cost. We considered a three-story addition on the south side, but that would just throw everything out of whack and would require an extra elevator, et cetera. So we dismissed that. So then we considered taking the house that's at the northeast corner, I believe it's called Merlin, which is used for special needs right now, and converting that into regular education. So that would work well for regular education. But then what happens to special education? Where would we put them? So you do have three spaces in the school that are double height, one over the library media center and one at each end of the major L-shaped corridor. So this image shows what it would look like if we put a floor across the library. It would capture over 3,500 square feet of space, which right now has to be heated and cooled quite inefficiently. There is a lot of drama in this space right now, but we think the panoramic windows you have will still provide a lot of drama. It will still remain a very nice space. So if we go to the next slide, you can see then, we have not had the benefit of talking to special education teachers for programming. So literally, we were just looking, okay, we've lost that space. Where would it go? And doing that way. But we would appreciate being able to have a deeper conversation about the needs. So one of the concerns we've had all along is that the eighth-grade art room was going to lose its direct access to windows. So we thought moving it to the center of the new space we've created over the library media center will take care of that issue. And then the current art room with the adjacent new room beside it could become the new CDCID room. And it's a larger space than the ones they're leaving, so we'd be able to put in a kitchenette and a bathroom for the activities of daily living. The other special needs rooms would then fit on either side of the art room and over that corridor space in the northeast corridor. So all of this can be done within the square footage that was given to us, 32,000 square feet in the referendum. So we would hope therefore it would fit within the budget, and it's efficient to use existing space. And as a bonus, we will get a really awesome eighth-grade art room. And just a quick story, I heard when Rivercrest was- And just a quick story, I heard when Rivercrest was finished that the art teacher walked into her art room and burst into tears of joy, and I hope the same thing would happen with this one.
So the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing would be expanded upon. Very similar, Clark was going to talk to that, but I understand we're running tight on time, so we're going to move past that and get quickly wrapped up here with some schedule and the fee discussion.
So to quickly wrap up on schedule, we love challenges. When we went with the administration, they said, is there any way that we can get the middle school going yet this fall? And we said, after looking at it, absolutely. We are going to have two teams simultaneously working on these projects, so it'll be a high school team and a middle school team, so we don't feel that that's going to be any problem whatsoever. The biggest thing that we're going to be looking at is timely interaction with your staff and your administration. And back in the original RFQ, we had these diagrams that kind of give you an idea of kind of how the involvement of the school district needs to happen. So we're above the line, you're, or, I'm sorry, you're above the line, we're below the line. Where your graph jumps up, that's where you're going to have some tasks that you need to be a little bit more heavily involved in. And you can see that there are some times when there's really not too much involvement from the district where we're back doing our work. But this timeline would still be in state. We're going to, basically follow it for both the middle school and the high school projects. Site would be concurrent with all of these. So I think that's my points.
So hopefully you saw something along the lines here, whether that's the auditorium, the site. Peg maybe saw something at the high school, Ann maybe the third house, Tim, probably the cash flow analysis on the PV is my guess. But something really tripped your trigger and thought, that's pretty exciting. So how much all of this is going to cost? And I think that's actually the best part. We've really put together a very competitive fee here, and what you see up in front of you right now actually reflects what's in the RFP. It did vary a little bit from the RFQ, based on the changes from the RFQ to the RFP, where we added some travel cost into there, and then actually we added also the energy modeling into our fee as well. This next slide is somewhat of a mirror image of what you see in the RFP as well, but it actually changed already since Wednesday. I had an opportunity to talk with Nick about the contract and had a couple of clarifications. So I just want to hit some highlights on that. First of all, there's nothing really in the contract that is going to be insurmountable. There's no reason that we feel that there's going to be anything that we can't work through with some discussions and come to an agreement. The piece on the plans, it was clear to us that we needed to include something in for hard copies per that. We typically have electronic copies. Most of the contractors now can accept those, and we share that in kind of a paper list is where the industry is trying to head. But with the interest of trying to have the copies, we put together an estimate of about 500 bucks is what we figure per hard copy of a high school set, and about 250 for the middle school set. All of that will total up, if you do 100 sets of each, it's about 75,000. We don't think that's going to anywhere come close to be what you have to spend. So what we're proposing is that you would just include an allowance. If it's not used, we would not be billing for it. It's not something we're trying to gain revenue on. We don't feel that that's fair to the district, and quite frankly, we want to see that money go into the scope of work. And additionally, then, we also talked about the travel. We typically travel from Appleton to New York, Florida, Nebraska. We go all over the country, and we typically do one design site visit a month. That's not hard and fast. It's sometimes two, sometimes maybe one and a half during the construction phase. In talking with Nick, we did say that there would be an opportunity to potentially tack on an additional trip, because we had called out in the RFP that we have one trip a month, and we're asking for an additional 35,000 to add for the 28 to 30 months of construction for that trip, which would actually equal about once to maybe an additional once to two times a month. And the other items are things that I think you saw, and I'll leave those for questions while I wrap up here with, really, we are very excited, and hopefully that fee and the designs that you've seen, really, this is just the beginning. We're not anywhere near the end yet, and we know that our job is going to be to bring you those ideas so that we can create your vision and ultimately provide the experience that your staff, your community, and your students deserve. And we have the experience, the background, and the passion to be able to do that, and we're excited to do that. This is our number-one priority. This is going to get your, our A-team, you will have that guaranteed from me, and we're ready to get started when you are. So with that, I'll turn it over for questions.
All right. Thank you, Sam. So at this point, we'll turn it over to board questions, let Jamie obviously facilitate that.
Do we have any board members that have that first question ready to roll?
Mr. President?
Yes, Sue.
Okay, I always have a question. I was just curious as to what current studies and innovations and insights are in place now in terms of designing or renovating gymnasium showers and bathrooms and, you know, that kind of thing, so everybody feels comfortable.
It's a great question. We actually, we're just talking about that with another school district as well, and how that's impacting what they need to do. And it's a hot topic. I'll actually turn it over to Jody if he wants to talk about how that impacts the design.
Yeah, the trend is actually, it will go towards having individual shower rooms. And it'll be kind of, and this might be 10, might be 20 years down the line, but it'll be kind of different than what everyone in America is used to. You'll have locker areas that are just kind of general, open areas that you can secure your items, but to go and change or shower, you'd go in an individual room. And it's much like what YMCA's do for family-changing areas. And it allows you the flexibility of not having to have, you know, X number of showers for male, X number of showers for female. It's much more flexible in use, and it gives you the ability, like I said, for parents that need to have their young ones with them, they can go in that room. If it's just an individual, they can use those rooms. So that trend is going to start to see, you know, you're going to start to see that coming into schools now, too. You know, right now, you're still going to see some school districts that are doing general locker rooms with individual stalls, but they're, you know, more in just a general shower area. But we absolutely have to be sensitive to kind of the changing times and the changing beliefs about how those places need to be set up.
All right. You provided several other projects that you've worked on in your RFP and the RFQ. Which of all of those do you see as the one that's the most similar in scope and complexity to this one?
It's actually a combination. Every project is different, and I think the experience that we have from the vast difference of the types of project is what makes us the best suited for this project. And I'll explain that a little bit further with Appleton School Districts, for instance. We had a massive amount of renovation in their existing buildings that entailed, it was six to seven million dollars' worth of work that was coordinated in a matter of three months' time to try to get that done. You're going to have that component on this high school project. You've also got 118,000-square-foot addition. So you're going to have one of the larger schools, you know, that were 250 and 300,000 square feet, that have administrations and classrooms and gymnasium additions that will be a component of this project as well. You've also got with the middle school addition, we've just built an entire new middle school and had smaller classroom additions, and how does that impact? And it's a little bit easier, but there's still coordination that is going to be required for those kinds of projects. The project that you have, while it is 94 million, truly is broken down and needs to be coordinated in a series of five or six different smaller projects that need to be coordinated in a way that's logical and does not create a safety issue, and it does not create any type of impedance to your existing curriculum. So I guess I'm not sure if there's one that points to that. It's a combination of multiple that have the different components that entail what you've got. Is that sufficient, or?
Well, I was just asking the question.
Is there, Jody or Catherine, do you have anything to add?
Well, I think we can also add that we recently renovated an auditorium. It was a pretty drab affair before we started, and it was completely transformed, and we did a lot of the same things that you're asking for, except that we're starting with a much nicer space here.
That is actually in your RFP. That's the Notre Dame Academy, if you're curious as to what that auditorium was.
All right. Anyone else?
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob?
You know, fees are tight, pretty much on every project, and many times in many projects, demo is used to create a clean slate in a project at the sacrificing infrastructure that the district already owns. How do you help us believe, understand that you're going to help us keep what we have and reinvest in that existing infrastructure?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So mechanical, electrical, systems?
Ah, okay.
Duck work, things along those lines.
Okay. That's a good question. Actually, I'll probably have Liz or Clark, if you want to, maybe Clark, if you want to talk about how, Clark had done that a little bit within the presentation, that 45-minute cap kind of limited that, but if you want to elaborate a little bit on that, how we'd save the systems, Clark.
As we were looking at this and laying it out and looking at your existing systems, there's a lot of it that can be recovered, and we can relook at it. One of the things we will have to do is due diligence. We have to do some testing on those existing piping systems. We have to do testings on the existing duct systems. One thing you don't want to do is have a system where you got extremely leaky duct work in it, because it's wasting energy, it's wasting your heating and cooling. Same thing with piping. You want to make sure that the piping is good and supportive and strong enough. But there are ways of rehabilitating some of that stuff. We've done some stuff with rehabilitation of leaky duct work, where we've had robots that go through and seal the duct work from the inside, things like that. The other thing is, we're going to have to work within the architecture and whatever the architectural changes are, and to make sure that what we have can and be adaptable to those architectural changes. But what we were planning on, when we looked at the project beginning with, was to use significant infrastructure that's already in place, particularly on the piping side. Some of the duct work we can or cannot use, particularly the 1960 building, there's really no duct work. You're using the tunnel, and it's really not a good environmentally way to supply air to the building, so that'll have all-new duct work. But the rest of the building, yeah, we're looking carefully, and we'll be looking carefully at what infrastructure we can remain, what can be saved, because it also, it impacts us in cost and what we can do to maintain the budget.
I think ultimately, if you have the 30,000-foot view of this, the ultimate goal is to try to salvage what we can, but do part of that lifecycle cost or that analysis was what can be integrated into some of the existing systems to save that cost. And that's why the system that was recommended, and again, this is just a preliminary concept. A lot, actually Jim Staskeal's not here today, but a lot of this would be discussed with him as well, as far as what he feels is going to be a good system, and ultimately, what he knows that building better than anybody, what he feels can be saved, and how can we use that to our advantage.
And Clark, I think another good example of that was just the whole kitchen setup with the steam system. You know, a lot of your equipment runs off of steam currently, and, you know, you start to get into, is it worth replacing all that equipment just to get completely rid of steam? And, you know, those are some of the things that, you know, we're really sensitive to make sure that we're not changing something just for the sake of changing it.
Rose, maybe just describe how you engage with the various stakeholders throughout the entire engagement process, from community all the way through up to the board.
That's also a good question. We have that, actually, we integrated that within the RFQ schedule to the RFP to try to illustrate that a little bit more within that. But that actually involves Mark Belkey, already has talked with the city. Jody, I'll let you talk about how we engage the staff and, quite frankly, even students that we would want to try to understand what their desires are as well. And then at that point, you start to develop your list of, you know, the needs versus wants, and start tallying that to a budget and making sure that we can deliver the most. But Jody, if you want to touch on stakeholder input a little bit more.
Well, as architects, we just love talking to people. So whenever we do a process like this, we're absolutely as involved as the district wants to have us involved. It's not unusual for us to talk to every single staff member in the facility in the initial stages of this. And we can do that that way. We can do it as representatives of staff groups, we can do it as representative community groups. It's really important for us at the beginning of this process to understand all of your goals, and not just from the board standpoint or from the administration standpoint, but from all the users, the community, the students. We want to make sure that we at least sit down with them and have a dialogue and generate some conversation about what their vision is and what they're thinking here. We take that time upfront, because the last thing that we want to have happen is, we're halfway through design, and somebody says, well, you never talked to me about this. This isn't what I wanted. Ultimately, you know, there's going to be a group of people that you identify that are going to make the ultimate decision, and we're going to bring options to you and help that group make those decisions. But, you know, that's really our job, is to gather all that together and bring it to you in a way that you can make effective decisions in a timely manner to keep the process going.
And we also identified in our proposal some first steps that we would want to take, and it includes neighborhood engagement, but that has to come together. We can't, we're not going to, we'll propose ideas, but it's really your decision on how you want to engage the neighborhood, the schedule to do that, the schedule to engage the city, and all the departments at the city, and things like that, and then staff, too. I mean, from a site perspective, we're going to meet with all the staff, the athletic, all the athletic folks, your facilities people. We need to get a traffic engineer on board, we need to get a soils RFP out, there's a lot of things that need to happen. But we will engage, there'll be a lot of engagement, and that would be one of the first steps, is to get a plan put together with you on how we're going to do that.
Sandy?
Okay. The, just a few questions. The solar thing that you're proposing, that's an interesting concept. Is that type of thing, the maintenance of something like that, you're talking about it 30 or 40 years, is the maintenance of it during that payoff period part of the contract that the company that we rented from pays, or is the school district responsible for broken panels and?
That's right. I think two comments. The first is that if you were to use the third-party participation, they are responsible for all of the maintenance, all of the operation for that 15-year period. In addition, those systems, the way we've been typically doing them, such as at the Darlington Community School System, the system you saw on the board there, it was 156 KW, there was extended warranties on the panels and on the inverters, that taking out at least 20 years also in that calculation. There's a lot of detail there. We have some maintenance costs built in, because we would expect after you get out beyond 20 years, you will have to replace some inverters. That is built in. The systems have proven very, very sound. There's no moving parts, that's the beauty of it, and there's a very, very slow degradation in output, but that's all factored into those estimates.
Thank you. And then another question. I know there's contingency funds in this type of project. There's a certain amount of money set aside for contingency. Can you give us a little explanation of what your vision of the use of those funds would be? What would qualify as being able to use that contingency fund to pay something? And also, how would you handle change orders?
Okay, that, I'm going to, so in the area of solar, there's no contingency needed, but, but Sam will answer on the overall, yeah.
So the overall budgets that we reviewed that were in part of the referendum actually were pretty sound budgets. We felt that those were very reasonable, and felt that the designs that you saw here today, obviously, these are concepts, things are going to change, but we felt very comfortable. We went to put these in front of you if we didn't think that that would be something that can be delivered. That being said, with the contingencies that you're addressing specifically, a project like this, you don't have any sort of a renovation that doesn't have some surprises that come up when you open up walls. There's going to be some different things that will be structural issues that will come in, and even some wants, if you will. We were talking actually about, you know, some of the things that we've done is, you know, the track is a great spot, but how can we maybe make that flow a little bit? Do you start to tap into some of those contingency dollars to improve designs and maybe cut some of those corners and structurally rebuild that side of the gym? We have no idea exactly what the contingency will be used for. We just know that there's going to be things that, because this design is fluid, you're going to possibly be pulling some of that to maybe offset some of those costs to get a design that is going to be more consistent with what the needs will be for the district, and ultimately provide the best solution. But then also, you do need to keep some of that, because you're opening up walls, and there is going to be some of that contingency that needs to be used for that.
Is there a percentage of the project that you suggest as setting aside for contingencies?
Certainly, as you get a larger project, the contingency doesn't need to be, you know, typically, people think, well, you got to have a 10% contingency right away. That's not necessary on a larger project, just because of the volume of the dollar. I would recommend at the start, you probably would start with about 5%, and then you would start to come down from there as that design gets into the construction documents. But before you go into construction, I wouldn't recommend anything less than probably a 3% to 3.5% contingency on the cost of the construction. That's my suggestion, anyway. But then, again, it depends on what occurs through that design process.
All right, thank you. And how do you handle change orders?
Change orders on this project, as far as a design standpoint, I don't foresee any change orders, but the change orders from a construction management, what we would do is be looking at those to find out, was that something that they could have known, or is that something that was truly an additional scope as a result of something that changed from the original documents or the original intent of the documents, I would say. It's a, and I'm not sure I'm answering the question that you had.
No, you're answering it fine.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate, thank you very much.
There's a lot of different ways you can interpret that question.
No, you answered it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Very good. I guess we're at the end of the hour, so to be consistent and fair, we have to cut it off here. But I want to thank you for coming. Any other comments, Nick, that we have to remind them of?
No, it's just, one person wants to see Tim Minor, Assistant, for contact information, that we can be in contact with you guys, maybe even yet this weekend. It's just going to kind of depend as the board makes their decision, and we'll keep you posted. So we do appreciate you coming today and spending the time with us and sharing some wonderful designs with us. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Call the meeting back into order and next up, Bray Architects and I'll let Dr. Nick lay out the ground rules.
All right. Really the ground rules with this will be, it'll be, there's no public comment portion of the meeting. So there'll be about a 45-minute presentation from the architects and then 15 minutes reserved for question and answers from the board. At about 40 minutes into the presentation, I'll kind of give you that there's about five minutes left, three minutes left if I missed that. And then just to kind of be fair, to get everybody through, just so everybody understands that, our next steps in our process is after we get through the presentation, the board will be going into closed session deliberating on the three presentations this morning and we hope to have a decision made here the next couple of days with the special board meeting set for May 25th to approve a final contract with an architectural firm. So with those things being said, I'll go ahead and start you up.
Great, thank you, Nick. Good to see all of you again, board members, rest of the admin team, great to be back. Excited to be here, not sure I'm excited about the mics, these things are sometimes a little cumbersome, but we'll work through it. Apologize in advance, I'm struggling with a cold that four-year-olds bring home from school, so if I cough a bit, I apologize. We're going to follow the general structure as you had asked for us to cover key topics. We're going to spend as much time as we possibly can on the visioning and the conceptual design. We're really excited about some of the thoughts and ideas and look forward to engaging you in a discussion about some additional solutions that may have come forward. Just a little background on Bray, we're celebrating our 54th year as the leading planner and designer of K-12 schools in Wisconsin. So this type of project is exactly what we do throughout the state of Wisconsin, from Kenosha to Prescott and everywhere in between, projects from a couple hundred thousand dollars to 100 million, this is exactly what we do and are really excited for the opportunity to continue our partnership with the Hudson School District. Principal involvement is critical. We feel it's important that you as an owner, when you're committing to an architectural partner, that you have ownership at the table. Steve and I are two of three owners, so the two of us will be intimately involved from initial design all the way through completion of the project. And so you know that at the table as we're making decisions, as we're committing to schedules and budgets, you have two of the three owners at the table with you. We think that's important, especially with a project of this significance and size as you're beginning to head down the path. We've enhanced our team since the original study phase with Sustainable Engineering Group, Manus to my left, you'll meet him in a minute, he'll talk a little bit about what they do. It's a phenomenal asset for you as an owner to have an additional resource that focuses just on sustainability, lifecycle cost analysis, reviewing the design, what we would call an MEP peer review of the electrical and HVAC systems. I think a great asset for you. 30 high school projects in the past 15 years and we have 12 projects right now in varying degrees of designer construction, very similar to this. Many of them are multi-phase, multi-year, challenging addition renovation projects. So excited to share a bit more about that. And obviously proud of the partnership that we fostered in helping, supporting, passing the referendum. You know, a lot of architects say they pass referendums. In reality, we support you in passing the referendum. So we're appreciative of that opportunity and hope we really get the chance to see this through to completion. You wanted to know a little bit about some similar projects, I'm going to just briefly touch on some of these. A good depth of addition renovation experience at middle schools, all of these projects are just that. From the award-winning Cromery Middle School in the upper left, phenomenal building, very innovative educationally. Lake Mills in the upper right, a LEED Platinum certified school. So if we elect as a group to go down the path of LEED, great deal of experience doing that for clients. A couple other longtime clients, New Holstein and then Oregon has been a longtime client, probably worked with them for the past 30 years on a number of different projects of types and sizes. High school's probably, obviously the biggest piece of what we're potentially talking about today, but the upper left-hand corner is Port Washington. We've talked about that project as a group a little bit in the past, it's very similar. It's a like-new high school. They're investing about $45 million in theirs, it's just a smaller student population. But the space you see in the upper left-hand corner is currently a gymnastics room and a project leadway STEM lab with no natural light that's going to be transformed into the hub of their new learning environment with their library. So a pretty exciting project, on budget, on schedule. We're really excited to see that project through over the next, how many years Fred? Two and a half, probably? Many years, similar, again, multi-phase, occupied building, extensive addition renovation. Kenosha Indian Trail, great project, mainly an expansion converting from an academy-style high school to a traditional high school and actually blending those two curriculums together. So the academies are existing, a traditional high school model was brought in. We're kind of doing the inverse a little bit in that we're kind of bringing the academy structure within the traditional high school, so a lot of similarities there as well. Parker and Craig, Janesville, Steve has led these efforts for us for many, many years. Steve and Fred ran the $70 million addition renovation at Janesville Parker and Craig. And then finally Oregon again, great new athletic venue in the lower right-hand corner. Auditoriums, it's a big part of what we're talking about. The two images on the top, Port Washington and Nina, are very similar to what the current scope is. It's kind of rebuilding from the walls in and building a new auditorium within the confines of the existing space. New lighting, new rigging, new sound systems, new seating, a whole new look and feel, not in their case, expanding the capacity of seating or the size of the house itself. The other two opportunities, Sun Prairie and New Berlin West, just other great facilities with a lot of innovative teaching spaces potentially, but more community performing spaces. So we have a great deal of experience in auditoriums as well. And then finally, outdoor athletics. This is a big piece and it's going to be a huge part of the high school project and where is it positioned on the site and how does it function? And this really is more about the selection of a civil engineering partner, we'll talk about that in a bit, that really is their main area of focus. But these are four projects that we have had, four of many projects we've had a good deal of experience on. They're all different. You see Wilmot is an asymmetrical layout with the football field shifted to one side with bleachers on one. Lawrence is a football soccer venue only with seating on both sides. Kenosha Indian Trail was a conversion of an existing stadium and then Lomira is a great example and it's very similar to this. We actually had to construct the new synthetic turf multipurpose stadium before we could begin construction of the high school because it was the only green space they had and the expansion was going to be going right on top of the athletic venue. So a lot of similar projects there. A little bit about our team, I will be leading the team as I have through the study phase and through the referendum support process, I will remain involved through completion. Steve, Mike and Liz will really lead the visioning effort and kind of the design effort for us. Liz is one of our two registered interior designers, so she'll become heavily involved as we move through the process. Doug, Mark and Jesus are more technical in nature, their focuses are really going to be on schedule, local approvals, code. In the end, they all have to come together, so everybody is going to have a hand in the design process, but we really have a great deal of experience. Mark specifically, Mark's been with us 30 years. He would probably rather stay at the office and draw than come to an interviewer meeting. You may learn that about him if we get to work together, but he's critically important. He's been involved, I think as many of our team members have, in more complex phased high school renovation projects than anybody in the state just because of the depth of experience we have. He's been involved and led many of those projects for us. In addition, Kyle Clark is in charge of quality control for us. He's a registered architect, but his job is to be reviewing every set of drawings before it leaves our office to make sure that we are reducing the number of change orders and changes in the field as much as possible. Terry Berkovitz, longtime Bray employee, 40-plus years, focuses on specifications. Seems like a minor thing, pretty important that we are specifying things correctly and he's got a great deal of knowledge that will be valuable to you. Fred's here today, Fred is a longtime onsite construction administrator. I think if you call any of our references, you'll find that he is an invaluable asset. You're going to work with all of us for a long period of time. Construction is longer than design here and so we felt it important that you have the chance to meet Fred and ask him any questions if you would like, but I think you'd find if you check any of our references that I've worked with Fred, it's invaluable to have somebody with his experience on your team. And then finally, Ally Nolan. Ally worked closely with Tracy and Nick on the referendum campaign. We think it's critically important that we continue to communicate. We can't stop and basically say, "Thanks, we've got your money" and go cold and not talk to the community anymore. You see one example of something we would recommend doing to our left here behind some of you. These pull-up banners are a great way to convey a message in lobbies of schools and other places throughout the community about the projects moving forward. They're relatively cost-effective, but it's a great way, we can have some dates of when phases we can be completed, anything we dream up in terms of what we want to communicate, that's one example. And we'll talk a bit more about that as we get into that. But again, I think all-encompassing, critically important that we continue to communicate and you get the access to our full depth of resources to do that. The consultant team, I'm going to be quick because Mike's already probably telling me I'm getting behind. The one thing I'll focus on here is the civil engineering selection. As I mentioned, the stadium piece is such a critically important part of the project. We're going to recommend, if you're interested, that you help us select that partner. We've worked with both Retler and Point of Beginning on many projects over the years. I believe you met Point of Beginning prior, in an interview prior to ours. Both great organizations. We think quite frankly, because it's potentially $10 million worth of this investment on the high school site, that you should be a partner with us in making that selection. So I think it's critically important that that is a partner that you are comfortable with as much as we are comfortable with. Other members of the team, Fredrickson and Merman, you've met them previously, they've been onsite, they know the buildings extremely well and they have an unmatched depth of experience with the plumbing, HVAC and electrical side. And then as I mentioned, the unique services that sustainable engineering brings as well. Let Manus speak a little bit about sustainable and their role in the project.
Okay, thanks Matt. So we really appreciate that this building is going to last at least 50 years. So whatever decisions that we make as a design team, they're critical to the success of the building over its life. So as part of the design effort, we're a fully-integrated design team and we, basically, we look at every possible option for the energy systems, lighting, HVAC, ventilation, electrical and perform lifecycle cost analysis and all the different system options because we really want to get the best system. We know how much energy costs are, oftentimes are the second biggest cost in operating budget for school districts, so we really want to make those decisions right. This is a typical example of a lifecycle cost analysis. This is done over 25 years and it basically compares seven different options. And you can see the bottom part of each of the bars is the first cost and then everything above it is operating costs. So you can see over 25 years, the first cost is actually a pretty small component of the total cost of that system. So as part of our analysis, we will look at every possible system there is that could be viable and we will see over the life of the building or 25 years usually is the nominal time we take, you know, how do the systems compare? So this has been a great tool for clients in the past that we've been able to use. So one of the things that we pride ourselves in is going back to, or keeping the relationship open with our clients and the systems that we designed and we, during design, we said, "This is going to be, this is your expected energy use." We know that oftentimes that the buildings aren't commissioned or operated as what was intended during design, that we can be off in the operating use. So we like to get the energy data from our clients and keep that connection at least for several years after the design. So what we've done is, these are just some sample projects, these are actual energy usage and you can see the six, these are its goals, the six goals to the left is actually the actual energy use of schools that this team has worked on. And you can see that the two right bars or the very far one is the Wisconsin average and what we have found compared to the average Wisconsin schools, the schools have been designed and are performing at less than half the energy of comparable schools. So this is something that we really pride ourselves in and as a team.
Yeah, thank you Manus. I think it's critically important, it's a unique role that we would recommend bringing to the team in that they're doing critical analysis of the core designs that Merman and Fredrickson are doing under our contract, but it's a role that we have found great value in. If we rely on the engineer to do it, they'll do this effort, but they're really so focused on designing and meeting schedule that we found great value in breaking it off, making it independent, having Manus and his team do a full review and make great recommendations. Our clients have benefited extensively from this integration of an additional partner on the team. So next we're going to talk about solutions. This is obviously the exciting part of the process and hopefully you saw some things that were exciting to you. We're pretty excited. You know, initially we feel pretty strongly that the referendum solutions were good. We're still confident that they were strong solutions, but it was also fun and I'm pretty excited about the potential different direction at the high school. A lot of similar features, but some very unique educational things as well. So we know a lot, we've been fortunate to work with you, we've listened a lot, but quite frankly, we haven't listened enough. These designs were created a bit in a volume. We haven't had a lot of staff engagement, we haven't had a lot of community engagement. We haven't had a lot of time with U.S. Board members beyond kind of the process of getting from study to referendum to really truly understand what U.S. Board members want this building to be, how you want it to support the community. So we think these designs reflect what we currently understand, but openly, I can promise you that the referendum solution, nor what we're going to show you now, is the right final solution. There's a lot of listening that still needs to occur before we land at the correct solution for Hudson. So they probably look relatively final, but just, no, they're not. There's a lot of effort and a lot of design time and a lot of listening that would have to happen from this point forward. So I'll turn it to Mike to talk a little bit about the middle school and then we'll jump over to Steve on the high school.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, we thought we'd spend a few minutes just to talk about the middle school. We know relative to the total scope of the project, this is a smaller piece of that, but it's just as critical as anything. And so we first looked back to notes and back to conversations we had during the Phase One study where we were fortunate to meet with administration at the middle school, with department heads, with a lot of the teachers. And, you know, throughout those dialogues, a lot of the words that you see on the screen behind us really were their words to define the positive things they saw in that building. We actually heard more good things about how the building functions than we heard about the challenges. And so things, you know, about the house organization and the collaboration that that allows, things that furthers into creativity, how that building really has had to adapt and has the flexibility that was built into that supported that. But the capacity was really the driver there. And so, you know, our 12, 13 teachers out on carts, getting them homes, getting students that are floating throughout the day, a little more structure in a house setting and then obviously our gymnasium capacity. And so we really do think that the, you know, the referendum concept achieved a lot of that capacity solution goals, but we thought what we would do is bring forward a couple new ideas and like Matt said, you know, it's really, this is the opportunity to bring those forward. Certainly if we circle back and land back at that referendum solution, that's great, but we thought a couple interesting ideas might emerge out of this dialogue. So what you see on the screen here is a site plan and similar to graphics you've seen in the past, the portions of the building in yellow are proposed new construction, so proposed additions. This really does look at a gymnasium addition, similar location to what was in the referendum solution, really think that is the appropriate spot for a new gymnasium, so that's off of the existing gym. And then furthest to the south is a two-story academic house addition. And then the new piece which we're going to talk just quickly about is a concept of adding an administrative addition, a new secure entry to the building off of that north side nearer the shared portion of the site with the Hudson Prairie. And so what you see on the screen here is a floor plan of the site plan you just saw. Again, the gymnasium box, very similar location, very similar size at this point to what you've seen in the past. To the south, what we're showing there is a house concept that again, attempts to pick up on all the good things we heard from the faculty and staff about how the houses are functioning today. We certainly want to spend some more time talking about the lockers and how we handle the lockers as part of the transitional movement through that space. But in terms of the organization of five classrooms, this would be a stacked concept. With this approach, we think we could simplify the needed circulation down to just a single stair in that addition. So you're seeing that kind of within the very southern portion of that addition. But then with that, maintain and maybe even enhance the entry and ingress and egress at that portion of the building. So out of a lot of the dialogue that we had, a kind of a common thread was really our drop-off and pickup, was our overlay with, you know, the timing with the elementary school and how we're moving buses and parents in and out of the site. And that will remain a critical part of the dialogue as we move forward. And so part of this thought was that maybe we could relocate the administrative offices, you know, for a first-time visitor, for an architect coming into the site, intuitively the entry where we're showing this addition looks and feels and kind of functions from a site perspective as kind of a front door to both schools intuitively as you come for the first time. And so part of the thought process is maybe that we can tap into that intuition, maybe the solution would propose putting the admin, putting the new front door right there, out intuitively what might be a more efficient balance of shared space. So maybe we can start to consider a shared plaza, maybe we can consider some of the early discussions around some site enhancements for vehicle and bus movement between the two schools with that concept. It also more centrally locates the admin in the building, okay? So one of the things that we experienced and observed is really the admin leadership, both from a day-to-day engagement standpoint as well as from a safety and security both from a day-to-day engagement standpoint as well as from a safety and security standpoint, is very much isolated at the southernmost end of that entire building. And so, this maybe centralizes them, but doesn't necessarily impact the site movement. So, we could still do drop-off and pickup in a very similar movement as we proposed initially. And so, and then here on the second floor, you're seeing, again, at that southern end, the stacked house concept, so it looks almost identical to the first floor. And then, one other thought that we might want to investigate with the team a little further is really the two-story or the one-and-a-half tall-story volume that is the library today, IMC today. That space, from an experience standpoint, the proportion of it is a bit narrow and a bit tall, and I think we have some challenges with sound and transparency into that. We think that there may be a potential concept to add a floor in between those two and maybe recapture. Maybe the library stays on the first floor, but maybe we can create some new innovative educational resource space, or maybe consider relocating the art classrooms or something into that spaces as well. So, a lot of things go into these conversations, but we think, as we get into this in more detail, certainly, we're going to want to spend some time looking at those. And then, we have just two quick renderings for you. This would be an initial concept, maybe for the new administrative entry. Okay? So, this is showing the addition, really looking to tie into the existing look and feel of the building, pick up on similar materials and similar fenestration patterns, but obviously, try to get some canopy elements in there, make this look and feel like a school, get some plaza space, some seating for drop-off and pickup, and then certainly, you know, flagpoles and benches and things like that. So, that's what you're seeing there. And then, we thought we should show you the addition to the south. So, this would be the two-story academic addition. Again, we recognize the fact that this probably will still need to act and function like a key drop-off and pickup zone for the building. So, having some architectural character there that starts to tie that together, maybe get some canopy elements in there, may be advantageous as well. So, and then, lastly, a rendering similar to what the dialogue we had during the pre-referendum design efforts, really looking at how, again, can we pick up on the positives of the house concept, look at collaboration and resource space? So, this is a view of kind of the shared resource space inside one of the houses.
All right. So, next, we're going to move over to Steve and talk a bit about the high school. So, a lot of exciting things here.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. This, when we, we originally thought we had a pretty good solution, and there were some good ideas in there. So, but we were, we knew there was a lot of work to do, and we were really kind of pleased that you challenged us to kind of come up with another idea, and sort of to demonstrate that we weren't locked into that, into that building. But we wanted to play off some of the, some of the things that we knew about, about the building. We know that the biggest, one of the biggest challenges was the, just the connectivity and the, kind of the congestion that occurs in the existing building. And so, that was one of our major focal points, and this design, as did the other one, sort of uses the addition to the building to solve that big issue as well as many others. Another thing we talked about was natural light, and you'll see in this image that we've kept a lot of natural light in the existing building, but also endeavored to create more natural light in the, in the, in the new building. So, what this does is it connects the two, kind of the two disparate areas of the building that were really left over from, from previous buildings. We've got the one on the left, which is now going to be, we're calling it the science and math area. You've got science in there. And then, off to the right are additional academic areas, and this new addition creates a link between those two spaces. And we're showing this major link, as we're calling it kind of the promenade. This is sort of the center of the school where a majority of the circulation will come. But we've also got additional circulation paths. We thought it's important, whenever we do a high school, to have a really strong sense of entry. And in the, in the previous iteration, we had that, but we were looking at maybe a one-story. In this case, we're looking at creating a two-story structure that's maybe even higher than the others' two-story structures. So, this is going to act as a beacon, as a clear-cut way to get into the building. It's not only, it's not only architecturally prominent, but I think from a, from a, kind of a heart of the school standpoint, it becomes, it really becomes, administration is the heart of the school as well as the library. So, and then, in addition to that, we've just outlined the, kind of the major or the minor streets that all feed into that promenade. That promenade is a, is a large, a large main street. It's got a lot of activity, but there's a lot of ability to get to that street. We've, one of the things we did that we hadn't, hadn't done in the previous plan was created another connector down to the, kind of to the bottom of the, of the screen. And that is just going to give another outlet to the students and another choice to the students to be able to, to access the building. So, so, once we, we kind of came up with this concept, then we started looking at opportunities. And, again, what we're, what we're looking at, you've done a lot of work in the science rooms at all, so we thought we'd keep the science rooms where they are, on the left side. That would become the science and math division, so to speak. And then, the new addition, we're looking at as kind of the humanities division, you know, social studies, history language, world language, that kind of thing. And then, and then the academies off to the right of the plan, and that really sets up nicely for the, for the, for the ninth grade academy, for the, for the STEM academy, and then the, finally, the healthcare academy. And we purposely not gotten too detailed on this because we know there's a lot of work to do, but conceptually, that works. And then, we looked at, as part of the STEM renovation, we looked at, at repurposing those, those rooms to the, just to the south of the shops. And if we can open that up and make that, those shops more visible to the, kind of the STEM component, it just makes them more welcoming, you might get more students involved. It's not like going to the back of the house. It really, we think, is going to, is going to be a big move to, to help that, that STEM component. So, you'll notice the, the, kind of a different approach to the classroom configuration. We wanted to talk about that next.
Steve, can you touch a little on the cafeteria piece and kind of taking over the library and that?
Oh, thank you. Yeah. Yeah, that was something we heard prior to the referendum, that maybe there was, there was a disconnect between the, kind of that cafeteria and the, and the, what we were proposing as the commons. And so, we thought, well, as part of this idea of getting the library to be heart of the school, let's look at repurposing that library and just, it already is right next to the serving area and the kitchen. So, we thought, let's repurpose that and create it, create a new cafeteria space out of that library space. So, we think, we think it works really well. It certainly helps the flow. Wouldn't say that we couldn't have other satellite areas for food service spread throughout the building, and we're going to touch a little bit about how that might occur as we move forward. So, this would be the second floor. It just shows kind of how that promenade would be open to above. We've got the library located up here, again, prominent, it's circular shape, doesn't have to be, but we thought, you know, it's kind of the heart of the school, everything flows to that or around it. And then, we've got a number of classrooms on the second floor as well. And so, again, I'll get back to that, the, the concept of those, of those classrooms, we're calling, kind of calling it the inside-out approach, where we're bringing the classrooms to the inside of the building and the corridors on the outside of the building. We think we can get lots of natural light borrowed from those, from the exterior skin of the building to the inside. And so, it's going, as you can see on this diagram, a lot of times when we have lots of windows in classrooms, if they're on the outside wall, we're dealing with glare, so we're trying to put, you know, we were putting some blinds up or some other, other, other way to deal with that glare. This, this kind of eliminates that. We bring the, we bring the daylight in across the corridor, so to speak, so the glare isn't as much of an issue, and we know that we can get as much light into those classrooms as if they were on the outside wall. Plus, it allows us to kind of use those corridor spaces as an extension of the classroom space. So, we try to, while they are circulation space, if they're, if they're designed properly, we can, we can get, get collaborative space adjacent to those classrooms. So...
And as we studied this with Manus, I mean, his initial reaction was that this concept is a far better way to harvest daylight and use it to your benefit. We're not blocking it out during learning periods, and so, in addition to the energy savings in the daylight, which is a huge part, we obviously know our current high school does not do a great job of providing daylight to students. So, this is not only an energy efficiency piece, but it's a real strong piece in terms of supporting collaboration and other learning. We're going to talk a little bit more as we move along about the added flexibility it offers as well.
So, so, again, what we've done is we've just sort of diagrammed, you know, we're not just, this isn't just about, this is really about transforming the existing high school into a new high school. And so, in that effort, this diagram kind of shows areas that we would repurpose for collaboration spaces. By putting the, the majority of the lockers in that promenade, we're pulling a lot of that, that, that kind of confusion and, and activity out of the corridor, so they can, they can be literally turned into educational spaces. And so, there's some, some nodes along the building, and these hatches here just sort of indicate the areas that, that could be used for this collaborative, kind of 21st century thinking in terms of the education. And to take it even further, the other thing we kind of liked about this solution, you know, we, we know where education is now, it's come a long way in the last 20 years in terms of, you know, personalized learning and collaboration, but we're, we're not, we're not quite sure where it's going to go from here. And so, flexibility is key whenever we design a school. And so, this kind of illustrates some of the flexibility we think this, this concept brings to the table. And again, the cross-stashed areas are just potential areas that could be set up as extensions of the classroom, where we would, maybe we've got some large doors that open in the corners, and then, there's a, there's a connectivity between that, between the classroom, the formal classroom space, and that more personalized space in the, in the corridors and the side, the parts outside of the classroom. And this is just an illustration, we've got four different options, there are probably many more beyond that as well. But it, it, the point is that it really gives us a lot of flexibility. This is just kind of an area of how, how this might work. You know, we're taking out, we're showing cross-hatching a lot of the corridor spaces, but there's no reason why that couldn't be extended, that the classroom couldn't be extended. You could have different groups doing different things within that space. You might even bring two classes together in that space, or maybe three classes together to do some large group stuff. So, again, the, the idea of flexibility, and then, getting daylight borrowed from those exterior, that exterior skin. And then, you know, we're always looking, what happens next? What if we continue to grow? Well, this is just an illustration of how we might add additional classrooms to these spaces and still maintain that collaborative space. The red is just an indication of, just some simple approaches, some simple diagrams of how we might add classroom space to these existing, to these existing pods. And we would construct these with as minimal amount of structure as we need. I mean, ideally, we'd get a clear span across these, we could knock the whole thing out and create any, any number of configurations. But at the, at the least, we would, we would, we would create these out of gypsum and steel studs, something that's easy to, you know, to be reconfigured over a summer or even over a semester break. So, it, again, it's an illustration of the flexibility in this approach. And then, there's just all kinds of opportunities. The office has been a buzz the last, we appreciate the time you gave us, by the way, to prepare for this, because we have really, the office has really gotten behind this, and we're really excited about it. We've had, we spent a lot of time just coming up with ideas and creating these really awesome pictures, which, which we never could do 10 years ago. I mean, this was, it's amazing how fast these things get put together. I'm totally blown away. But, this would be the, this is kind of an illustration of that, that entryway, that focal point, that there's the heart of the school, you know, you can imagine that even lit up at night. It's, it's a beacon, you know, to the, to the community. It, there's an opportunity for a plaza to be, you know, again, just emphasizing that entrance, and it could be a sort of a, used as an outdoor, gathering outdoor space. This, we're sort of, we like to label things. We're calling this the forum. This would be kind of a, since it's a second story and we're going to have stairs going up to the second story, we thought, why not make that a prominent stair? It could also become a teaching space. If we, if we're showing this as it's got stairs, but it's also got stadia seating. So, you could do some community, some community presentations as well as just some informal student, you know, student space. And again, it's, the idea is to take advantage of that circulation space and turn every inch of that school that we can into, into educational space.
We also try to make these realistic. Every kid in here has a device in their hand, one has a book. So, it's about as realistic as we can get in terms of the actual split there as well.
And we should point out Socrates. They put Socrates in. He's, he's giving a little soliloquy up there. So, one of our interns will be really happy that we pointed that out.
There's a long story on that, but not enough time today.
So, then, and then, this is just a view from the second floor, looking out over the, over the promenade, just to show the, you know, the openness, the ability of natural light coming into the space. You know, we still have to have that discussion on lockers, and we touched on that a little bit, you know, the need for lockers, how big should they be, you know, the numbers of them, et cetera, et cetera. So, and then, here's an existing space, and this is over where the, we're proposing the STEM academy be located, which is where the existing, it used to be, way back, it was a music space. And we're, we're proposing to just take some, take, open up those walls to the courtyard, bring some natural light, and then really open up that wall on the east end to that, to that, what is now just sort of a pass-through space, and create a STEM commons. And we're also, to the right, you can see where we're sort of opening it up for the shops that we talked about before, to just really give this a fresh, new look, like, hopefully, it would look like you're in a whole new building. So, lots of opportunity there for cool, interesting, you know, educational design. So...
So, the other piece is the auditorium, obviously, a pretty important piece of it. We're familiar with the current condition. The rendering, this should look familiar, this is a referendum rendering. We did spend some time studying if there is a way to increase the capacity of the space, and quite frankly, there is, but it would take an investment, and I think we, as a group, would have to prioritize if that's where the dollars wanted to be spent. So, we didn't breathe a whole lot, a lot of new life into this. There's not a whole lot more we can do until we have the listening phase of the conversation with the arts group about what needs to happen here. So, but we also wanted to make sure you know we didn't forget about this. It's an important piece, it's a huge part of the project, and we will revisit this with the same intensity we have the rest of the program, if we're fortunate enough to get on board moving forward. The site's a big part of this. Steve hit on the, kind of getting rid of the outdoor corridor, connecting it with the promenade component of the project. We're also targeting that thousand parking spaces, a pretty big goal for this site. This site concept should look pretty familiar. I think we've actually eased the circulation a little bit. The four-way intersection where most of our traffic comes onto site had, in previous concepts, and currently has a bit of a bend in it as you approach. We think there's the potential to straighten that out a bit or soften that angle. And then, what we're also doing is doubling that up with a pedestrian connection all the way from the street to the main entry sequence as well at the beacon location. Not only do we hope that people filter from the parking lot to that to move into the building instead of circulating through the parking lot, that happens a lot now, it's not the safest condition. So, if we can create a pleasant circulation spine through parking to the main entry, we think that'll not only improve safety, but it's a far better experience. This positions the stadium where it was previously, and this image shows a little bit about how that interaction could occur. We're showing a trellis element and kind of a ticket booth slash small concession location adjacent to the main entry sequence to the stadium. We have, in this case, I think, as you saw in the floor plan, relocated or proposed possibly moving concessions and whatever bathrooms we do need to do by code to connect to the building instead. We think it makes them a bit more usable. It puts them in a good position, they're still close enough, but they don't become an independent building separate from. We also basically cover the entire facade here. So, you'll have a, basically, an entirely new facade to the school for all visitors to the building. This is a new view, wasn't the original packet, an option of what may, what it may look like when there's an event going on in the evening hours, if people are using the track. It kind of brings some clarity to how close we actually would be with the building and the multipurpose stadium. And then, we did want to talk about, just very briefly, another scenario. We always kind of get into these, what if we considered other thoughts? This would be a bit atypical, and this was really driven by, I think, our concern of how far away some of our spectators were getting from the playing surfaces. And that doesn't mean track isn't critically important, but every time we put track, we put a track down and we put a soccer field in between, of any width that the soccer teams would traditionally be happy with, it does tend to drive spectators further away from some of the boundary lines. So, this will take a lot of discussion. I have no idea if it's the right solution, but there is the potential to detach the track component from the stadium component, which would create a far, I think, a better experience for the stadium users. And we would just have to work on if there's a way to use portable bleachers or some mechanism to give sufficient seating for the track when it's functioning without investing in all of that seating. So, just another thought and idea, it's helped by the fact that you're investing in some additional land onsite to possibly move some parking. additional land onsite to possibly move some parking around, but we think this has, potentially has some merit as well as we continue down the discussions. So we're going to talk next a little bit about the timeline and process. So very briefly, we typically see, and this has been a very successful process for us, advisory committees. So what we would recommend is the middle school, high school, the performing arts and then the outdoor athletic and rec form advisory committees. The most important word there is advisory. We're not asking them to make decisions, they're not giving direction, they're providing feedback and advice. Ultimately, that information would be communicated to the steering committee, typically consists of your administrative leaders, your educational leaders, who would be bringing forth recommendations in your case to facilities and grounds and eventually to the board. Relatively straightforward, but it's critically important that we have those advisory committees because we need a lot of input from users in order to get this right. Student involvement is also critically important for us. This photo is an example of Cromery Middle School. This wouldn't have happened if we weren't willing to listen to students. We were doing an advisory committee meeting, the sixth grade science said, we're studying hygiene and the students would like to talk to you. Said, okay. We got up, went into the sixth grade science class and they talked about how important hand washing is and they would really love to be able to wash their hands before they go to lunch in their new school. This wasn't there before. We redesigned the plan midstream, listened to the students, these are hand washing stations right in line with where the students line up as a great way to, again, we've designed hundreds of schools and this concept had not really come forward until we listened to students. So critically important piece. Doug's going to touch briefly on schedule, this is again, another 45-minute discussion in and of itself.
Right, thanks Matt. What you see here is a summary of the schedules for both middle school and high school. We've taken great study to look at how these two processes can work together in process with one another to be your most efficient use of your time and for our teams' interaction with your teams. We're portraying this broken down in schematic design, design development, construction documents, bidding and award and then the construction phases, kind of a traditional architectural delivery process. In the case of the middle school, we do have that advanced schedule, so we have advanced bid packages, one for the site infrastructure work and then another one for the footings, foundation and steel work and that allows this more advanced scheduling to complete the project in 15 months. So those processes overlap one another and we've looked at that in the more detailed schedule, which is in your previous booklet, how that can be accomplished. Throughout this process, we have bi-weekly meetings and then we go forward with the monthly meetings to your board and to community outreach to keep all the referendum folks with a clear understanding of how the process is going. And then in the case of the high school, of course, it's a longer process, so there's more weeks for each of those phases, but once again, we have a site civil package as a lead package because of the long lead times often for that infrastructure and to certainly validate that it can accommodate the new school footprint discussion. Throughout this, in both cases, of course, we have cost estimating, one of which takes place at Bray Architects and then once we help you with your construction manager selection, we schedule in those times for pricing packages throughout that process. And that's a key element of keeping us on budget. And throughout that as well, we'll handle alternate bid packages within the package so you get your ultimate value at your budget price.
So Mike's going to pass around, the other part of that you saw hopefully in summary form is the ongoing communication. This looks like a very simple document, but this is something we commit to our clients and would commit to you as well. It's a monthly design summary. It's often very challenging to continue communicating about design to the public and they think you've kind of gone dark during that design period and it's the most essential time because they're engaged, they just supported a referendum, they want to know what's happening. So while this handout may look really simple, it's a lot more words than as architects we would like, but it's critically important to communicate everything as we're going through this process. Where are we? In this case, we're doing a monthly update for this client. It's prepared on a monthly basis, goes out at the end of the month, superintendent emails it to all staff, all parents, printed copies are distributed throughout the community in key locations, banks, et cetera, and that will be from the day we've started design, relatively straightforward as you see there, all the way through completion. And I think that's a great example of our desire to continue to communicate with the public as we move through the process. The construction timing, the middle school will be contingent on which solution as a group we land on in terms of where those locations are. Do we have to phase a secure entry and office location before we start construction? If it's the referendum solution, it's a little more straightforward, we can arguably start as soon as drawings are ready. So middle school relatively straightforward, but still important that we consider and make sure that we're taking into account impact on students and learning as we go through it. The high school, obviously far more complex and we've talked extensively about this. We still feel pretty comfortable and confident with the initial referendum schedule in terms of the big moves. There's a lot of detail that has to go into this. The big moves being getting temporary parking constructed in the spring of 2017. The other piece of this is accelerating the stadium construction project and it may not be the whole stadium, but critically important to get the turf down. We're going to take basically all green space from this site pretty early on as soon as we do construction laydown and staging in the lower left-hand corner of this image and we take parking in the upper right-hand corner. If sooner we can get that, I'll call it the rug, the artificial turf down, the better off we're going to be. And we think and we feel confident that we can have that done for the start of school year in 17. So it'll be a couple of months at the end of the next school year where we would potentially not have some green space available, but our hope is that other than that, we will have the turf in place to take that on for you. Phasing is key here at the high school as well. We will be wrapping up shortly. This obviously looks very similar. Phase one has to be new construction, get you the space that we need for learning so that we can flex students in and out of that. Fred will play a key role in helping us decipher constructability in a lot of this as well. So finally on fees, we hope this was pretty transparent in how we've proposed it and if it wasn't initially, Tim made it transparent in the follow-up response and how we were supposed to propose it. So if you have any questions on this, we would happily discuss this in great detail. This fee's based on our hourly analysis of two recent projects having a lot of similarities and direct proposals from engineers, so we feel very comfortable and confident with it. So in closing, we just wanted to show you a little animation and this is again representative of the level of commitment detail we think that you should expect from your partner. This is just kind of an experience if you were a drone, I guess, originally approaching the school, moving up the pedestrian circulation through what is currently just a hardscape parking lot, but we envision more as a softer entry to the school. You can see the beacon come into shape as we're approaching the building. Kind of pause, you can see great learning going on on the left, active student on the right proceeding in through the secure entry, potentially an outdoor space off of the library above and then moving inside. The promenade, as Steve mentioned, it's circulation, but it's learning. This is a potentially very transformative learning environment, obviously investing in the arts. The forum, this is a pretty important piece, we think, of what the school could become and we really envision this as the heart of learning and the social side of being a high schooler all at the same time. So with that, we will open it up for questions.
Board members have questions?
Mr. President, I have a question. I wanted to ask you about materials. What is Bray's kind of philosophy and what kind of materials do you use, like to use in both in terms of aesthetics and innovation and, you know, you keep talking about this, the beacon, you know, where the entrance is and then as that relates to functionality and utility.
Great, and I'll turn to Steve for kind of the design side of that. I'll just, I'll quickly summarize, I think there's always a balance between functionality, durability, cost, longevity, that's the practical side of what we do and we have to make sure that the materials and the design reflect all of those qualities because these are 50-plus year solutions. And so we have to make sure that the materials we're proposing hold up the test of time in a harsh climate. So at a bare minimum, that's an expectation for any material that we would choose and I'll let Steve talk a little bit just about.
I think, and our, kind of our philosophy as a firm, although we don't adhere strictly to a particular philosophy, but generally we like, we look at materials and look, kind of an aesthetic that is a timeless look. You know, we don't, we try to avoid trendy sort of things so that, you know, 20 years from now, we're not looking at the school going, oh, I know the year they built that. And so I think the material that we probably use the most is brick and it's a tried and true. It's, you know, a brick wall, a brick cavity wall is probably the most proven, most vetted wall system out there. And so we would probably start with that. Now, there's always opportunities to do, to look at areas of importance that maybe it would be something different. Obviously, we'd use a lot of glass on this building, which of course is timeless, but there's a lot of different colors of glass and so we'd carefully select that. But I think we try to keep it as, to a simple, timeless palette, so maybe brick and one or two other materials. We don't want to get too fussy with the materials, knowing that, not only from aesthetic standpoint, but also from a, from a maintenance standpoint, so.
In the end, those are decisions we make as a group collectively though. We're going to bring forward ideas and recommendations, but as a team in the end, our clients dictate the materials that they would like to see in their buildings.
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob.
So a couple of quick questions. Port Washington, you break ground this summer, is that right?
It's already broken ground, they're under construction now.
Okay. Fees are tight, they always are on projects, you know, demolition many times is used as a way to maintain fee, but at the same time, you remove owners' existing infrastructure, ductwork, things along those lines. Can you talk to us a little bit about your view on saving as much of that useful infrastructure as possible versus just getting rid of it for the sake of fees?
Yeah, absolutely. I would say in this case specifically, it's a fixed fee scenario, so in the end, there's no correlation between the construction cost and our fee. So if that's a concern for anybody, it should not be here because our fee is a fixed amount and will not be affected by the eventual dollars you invest. As I said about materials, quite frankly, those are decisions we make with you, we don't make for you. You understand your systems, we're going to bring forth recommendations, but those are just recommendations. We are obviously going to make sure that we're within the code requirements and the standards and the quality, but in the end, if you elect to keep or remove additional ductwork or lighting or whatever it may be, those are decisions that we bring the pros and cons forward and you as a client make the decision on the right solution for you as a district. In general, and I think we went further here with defining the general HVAC scope, it was still general, we didn't investigate every duct and everything, but the strategy was where we have recently invested in HVAC infrastructure, we know we need new controls, but we're probably going to reuse a fair amount of that ductwork and other things if at all possible because there's no reason in taking out a 12-inch duct and replacing it with a 12, obviously. And so that's another component, Manison, his team will bring forward during the MEP peer review portion is if they see some potential savings, again, they're going to bring it forward. Their fee has no correlation to construction costs or savings found or anything, so their only responsibility is to us and to the client to make sure you're getting the best building possible.
Bruce?
So first of all, I just want to say thanks for the time and the amount of energy you put into redesigning from what we had originally seen, it's great, so thank you for that. So it's a very complex project, right, all the way through. What area of the entire project in your experience would be the area that may keep you up most at night?
I think in this case, schedule, I have to be honest, is a concern. I think this is, it's a very attainable schedule, but quite frankly, my fear always ends up, and there's some projects where we just reach a point where the client kind of says, uncle, I can't make decisions fast enough to meet this schedule, let's pause. There's nothing wrong with that. And again, that doesn't affect our fee. We don't charge for the number of meetings, we know you can't tell us how many meetings it's going to take, we can't tell you how many meetings it's going to take. It's really about the partnership of getting this right. And so I think schedule from kind of a non-technical perspective is a concern and it always is. The other one is site, stormwater specifically. If we can work with the city on a regional stormwater solution, which I don't know exactly what that means, enhancing what they have, constructing on their land, whatever it may be, that will be a big benefit to the school district for many years to come and I think it's in a very early area of focus for us through the project. The other part of it is just keeping a school going. It's challenging and we're going to be cutting fiber lines and dealing with communication and safety systems and fire alarms and all the things that go into, that we don't even see that are above the ceilings, we're going to know they're there, but that phasing piece and making sure we get it right so that learning can continue is critically important. And I think we have, nobody can touch the level of experience we have doing just that, but it still takes a huge amount of effort and a huge amount of coordination from our team. Doug will be leading that effort and Fred, having experienced many of the challenges in the field when trying to implement these projects, they're invaluable resources for you as we make sure we get that piece of it right.
Thanks.
Can I elaborate? I'd like to chime in on a little bit as if you had asked me that question. One thing that used to keep me up at night was if I'm not thorough enough in the pre-design process to make sure we've addressed all of owners' needs and concerns. That's a big part of what we do now to make sure we're thorough with that because hence the advisory committees, making sure we're getting the ears and input from everyone on your staff and faculty. It's a very, very important piece and then appropriately documented so there's understanding of how we arrived at a certain decision. Because these decisions are complex and over a long timeframe, there can be selective memories and it's important to have a consensus and an understanding because I think one of the worst things is if it were to happen late in the game, if someone's not happy with the product, that would not be acceptable.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Mr. President?
Yes, Sandy.
Can you talk a little bit about your change order process and the contingency fund usage? What types of expenses would be taken out of a contingency fund? And what percentage of the project do you think a contingency fund should be for this size project?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. And did you notice the cafeteria and the circulation, Sandy? I just want to make sure.
I did, it's wonderful, thank you.
Contingency is critically important, especially on projects of this complexity. We traditionally would see a contingency somewhere around 5%. That can be narrowed as we begin to complete phases and begin to get through the project, of course. I will say, our track record though is that we're in about the 2% to 3% range in total on a project. Falls in three categories. We track this very closely. Every project internally has a tracking system for change orders, we need to know where those are coming down. It almost falls 1% unsuitable soils, bad soils have to overexcavate, remove from the site, bring in new fill. About 1%, what we would call drawing discrepancies, there's no perfect set of drawings. We'll never say there is, and any architect that tells you there is, they're not telling you the truth. There's no way in a simple project or a complex one to have every last detail coordinated. That's about 1% typically in our experience. And then the other 1% is owner-directed changes. These I think are good changes. These are changes when you get in a room and say, you know, now that we're in here, we need extra data out over here or on second thought, we need another door. Those things are okay. Those are investments that you're making with dollars that are enhancing the way the building's going to function. So, you know, the change order word always has a really bad connotation to it and quite frankly, it doesn't always have to. There's pieces of the project that are unavoidable. We're very proud of the 2% to 3% track record, we've implemented quality control review process to make sure that we meet if not exceed that on projects and that's the role Kyle and I initially introduced, his dedicated role of quality control. We've also added a bidding phase review category to our quality control review process. So once the drawings are done and before bids are received, it's a detailed sit-down with the owner. It's monotonous and in a project of this type, it's probably a day or more. It's flipping every sheet, all engineers, all owner reps at the table. If we catch one thing or we catch 20 things, those are change orders that don't happen because we can get them issued by addendum. And we've found that that has brought down the owner-directed changes side of our process quite a bit and something we're going to continue to commit to moving forward because it benefits our clients greatly.
Thank you. One other question.
Absolutely.
I noticed on your fees, you've got a credit of $86,200, but I know that we've only so far paid you 24, about $24,000 for your services up to this point. So how do we get an $86,000 credit when we've only paid you 24?
I believe the other half of our fee just has not been invoiced at this point and so if, for the pre-referendum support phase services. So if that were the case, we just wouldn't invoice for it, obviously, and we would credit back the other part of it.
So the 86 is everything that we would owe you for all of your pre-referendum work?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, Matt, as you know, this project be the largest in Wisconsin's history as far as not, no new building being constructed, there's additions and renovations and you've been involved in that before. You've cited seven or eight other projects in your materials and provided more detail about those in the RFQ. Which one of those do you feel is the most similar to this? And then second part of the question is, which of all your projects do you feel is the most innovative?
Sure. I would say the, there's two projects that are most similar. We touched on Port Washington a little bit, that's very recent and current and I don't want to use it because I can't tell you what the outcome is quite yet. So I don't, I don't want to kind of leap to assume that that's going to be a perfect project. It's a great project and it directly correlates the number of phases, the duration. the number of phases, the duration, a bit of the educational innovation, not quite as far as potentially we may go here, but it's a great project. The other one that comes to mind is Wilmot High School and we included it in there. Far more challenging, believe it or not, site. It had wetlands. It had every challenge you could imagine. So, from just a pure phasing constructibility perspective, Wilmot is probably the best direct comparison. It's not educationally innovative. They did not have a desire for it as much as we talked to them about what spaces could do to enhance teaching and learning. It just wasn't that client's desire. And so, I think from the perspective of learning lessons about how to build a building while students go to school and teachers teach, it's a great example. Educationally, in terms of the spaces it created, I wouldn't say it's one that we would have to go to her. And then, the project I think we're probably most proud of recently is Cromery Middle School. And we've talked a lot about it. It's a phenomenally innovative project. It's really enhancing the way those students learn and teachers teach. And to every time we go, see the collaboration spaces configured differently and structured differently and the staff using those spaces to the level that we'd envisioned them using them. It's really pretty exciting. We were at an award ceremony for that building Thursday night and the principal told us that they've had their second delegation of Chinese educators come now to visit the school because apparently in their 90,000 student school district, which I couldn't get over that, but once I got over that, they sit 50 students in rows in desks facing forward in one classroom. 50 students rows facing forward. So, when they saw this Cromery, they just, it made no sense to them. It was the most confusing thing ever. But they're now on their second contingent coming back to see how we teach and how buildings can enhance that. So, we're very proud of it. And even though it's a middle school, a lot of those concepts correlate directly to how we're going to learn in the high school level as well.
All right. Do we have time for just one short question? Does anybody have one? Well, I'll just ask, what's your probably largest conflict you've had with any? You described a couple in the RFQ. I saw that, but which one would you say had the most potential for being trouble and how did you resolve it?
Yeah, and I can, I'm trying to think of largest. Fred probably could tell you a story for hours about challenges on projects.
Yeah.
I will say, we try very hard to avoid any sort of arbitration, mediation, litigation. And I think you saw in our background, we just don't have any in the last 15-plus years. It's because K-12 education is such a huge part of what we do. Making sure clients are happy at the end is an essential part of our ongoing business model. And anytime we can, within reason, we're going to invest and partner to find solutions. I'll give you an example in Prescott. It's very close, very local. Quite frankly, we screwed up the wall section, the design for the masonry, how high the block needed to go on the auditorium. It was on us. We owned it. We are paying for a part of it. We're not paying for all of it. In that case, the owner was willing to. They understood that if we had drawn it correctly, they would have paid for that block anyway. So, in this case, we're paying for all of the remobilization costs, all of the additional costs that were required because of our mistake. So, we do own up to them. It's critically important that our clients are satisfied at the end and I don't envision this being any different.
Okay. All right. We're at the end of the time and I guess we know how to get a hold of you.
We will nervously be driving.
So, the board will be adjourning into closed session here when we're done. Like I said, we will be, over the next couple of days, we'll be making contact with the different firms on the different options. I don't have anything else. We do appreciate you guys coming up today and sharing your designs, both designs that you've done for us and also some of the new designs as well. So, look forward to talking to everybody over in the next few days. Do you prefer we take a break or should we take the motion now to go to closed session? We probably, yeah, go ahead. All right. So, I'll entertain at this time a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the language that's in the agenda.
Mr. President, I move to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, par. 1, par. E, deliberating and negotiating selection of an architectural firm whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Lynn, second by Bruce. All in favor, oh, I guess we've got to have a roll call, so start with Rob.
Brown, aye.
Littaker, aye.
Gurke, aye.
Hanson, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Robson, aye.
Kitas, aye.
All right, the motion passes. We will now adjourn to closed session. I want to thank the public for coming and I want to thank our applicants as well. Thank you for your time.
Next up.
Yeah, I don't have one. They're wrapped on the table. Call the meeting to order and remind the board members that we have public in attendance here and we are on video as we were on Saturday for the first three and a half, going on four hours of that meeting. And then, we held the last 90 minutes in closed session. Our topics for action today are first to select a delegate to the CISA 11 Annual Convention, the date of which is June, Monday, June 6, 2016. And where's the location, Nick?
It would be up in Turtle Lake.
It will be Turtle Lake, yeah. That's where most of the CISA meetings have been held. But so, I'm taking myself out of the running because I'm going to be in Milwaukee on that day, but looking for board member willing to serve, yes?
I nominate Sukitas.
I cannot be in the running either. I'm not available.
Okay.
June 6, Sandy.
June 6. And what time is it, Nick?
It's in the evening, I believe, like 6:00. Let me see if I can pull it up.
Their usual scenario is I think it provides up about 5:30 and then...
I can always make a nomination. I would like to nominate Rob.
Unfortunately, I will be out of town.
7:00. Sorry, it's at 7:00. It's in Turtle Lake.
Okay. We have finance committee that night, correct?
No.
No. No, remember, we did away with standing committees for the next year.
They're still showing on my calendar, so.
Yeah, that can be taken out.
Is this coming down to the guy who's not in their own?
I think so.
I have a commitment that night also. I could do it.
All right. So, who wants the short straw? Bruce, are you going to be in town? I know you travel a fair amount.
Who's the other person that said they could do it?
Your buddy out in Holton.
I'm not going to make you do it. I'll go.
Okay.
Okay, Bruce, you go ahead and put your name on for this, but I may be able to be free that night. So, if something comes up for your schedule that you have a conflict, if I had a couple of days' notice, I might be able to free myself up and I could go in your place. So, I'll be your stand-in. How's that sound?
I appreciate that. I think I've got a meeting that is happening in town the next morning, so I shouldn't have to travel. I just, 7:00, 7, what is it, 7 to 9, 7 to 10, Rob? What was the last year?
It's two hours.
Two.
Two hours. And, yeah. Aren't we the, we're the largest district in the CISA?
Yes.
Yeah. I think that I would take, I think if we're in order for a motion, maybe to appoint a single person and have a first alternate, second alternate. Reminding board members, if you want to go, you don't have to be the delegate to go. Anyone can go to this. It's just that you can only have one voting member per delegation. So, I will entertain a motion for nomination and that would include alternates.
I move Bruce Hanson to be our delegate to the CISA 11 event on Monday, June 6 and nominate Sandy Gurke as our alternate.
As first alternate and Lynn a second, just in case we don't have to, I don't want to reconvene the district just to have to get another delegate. So, are you willing to serve in that second alternate?
Yes, yep.
All right. Motion by Bruce, second by Sandy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion by Rob.
I'm sorry, did I, I'm sorry, Rob. I was looking around at him.
[laughing].
All right. All right. Motion by Rob, second by Sandy. And then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we've set up our...
[laughing].
You're not here. You don't get a vote. Hope.
Okay.
I'm kidding.
All right. Moving on to our primary agenda item, not that we want to discount, you know, Bruce's appointment here to the CISA convention, but we have a contract to approve. And for those folks who are here in public and for our viewing audience, reiterate again that we conducted architect interviews and actually, the process started a day after the referendum where we put out RFQs and invited, what was it, nine to 11 firms to make proposals of those. We had four that expressed interest. One drew their name and so, we didn't have to do any winnowing from four to three. But we had, all three of the finalists were architectural firms that have had some tie to the district, included ATS and R, Hoffman and Bray Architects. And after equal time, everyone got, I think it was 62 minutes because we went over a little bit with some questions on the first one and gave everyone the same amount of time. And then, the board adjourned to closed session and after roughly 90 minutes of debate, correct me if I'm wrong, we have a selection and I would entertain a motion for approval of a contract.
So, move.
Second.
All right. Well, could we, Bruce, I appreciate the move, but we need to like, let the public know who it is that we picked?
So, a formal motion to move forward with Bray Architects for the, I don't know, what should I say?
The work resulting from the April 5th referendum.
There you go.
Okay. And so...
As specified in this contract?
There you go.
Okay. So, motion by Bruce with help from a few others and second by Carrie. We have, now, obviously discussion. And so, we have selected Bray and we have a contract. I guess my opening comment and open it then for other board members to discuss, but I would point out that fee was not, was part of the proposals, but it was not certainly a primary consideration. But I think it was one of the advantages of Bray was that their fee structure included many things. It was pretty much an all-inclusive, other than those that were very much specified as being out of. Certainly, there's always going to be something they can't anticipate, but it was more inclusive than the other two fee structures. And number two, as to the contract that we have before us and as part of this motion, it's a contract, while it's got in the title, standard architect contract. This is not an AIA architectural contract where it's pro-industry, maybe one that architects would put out for their benefit and have any ambiguities kind of skewed in their favor. This is one that is customized to our district, one I think Dr. Nick, you used before.
So, this contract definitely, so typically what happens is the AIA contract was the American Institute of Architects. They have like a standard template that they use and you go through the contract, you strike through language you don't want, you try to add some language, you go through some different things. But obviously, written by the Architects' Association, so it definitely slants a little bit more towards protection of the architect. You know, we've had experience in different districts where we've done a lot of construction and so, had different school attorneys draw up a contract that, not that it's necessarily slanted towards the owner, but it definitely puts the owner's interest at the forefront of the contract probably more so than the architect's interest. And so, we went through that contract with our attorney, Ann Patterson, out of Green Bay, who, that's what she does. She specializes in commercial real estate and contract law. She went through and Wisconsinized some things. I asked her what she thought when it was all done and she said, you know, if this starts to catch on in Wisconsin, I don't think architects are going to like that because it definitely is more owner-centered than vendor-centered. And so, but she said, you know, it definitely protects the district and that's what it's designed to do. It's much more extensive than the AIA. Like Jamie said, it gets rid of a lot of ambiguities that are in the AIA and spells them out upfront. The other thing that we've done with the contract is we've asked for a lump sum so that we've defined the scope of the work and then, after the scope of the work's been defined, they put in how much it costs to do that scope of the work. So, they have two vested interests. One, in making sure it's right the first time because part of the contract also, any change orders or that aren't a change in scope but are as a result of design deficiencies or because it comes back too high on the bid process, we don't owe them additional money to redraw those things and things like that. That's all built into their original fee. And so, they have obviously vested interest to get it right the first time because otherwise, they'll be putting additional time in at a cost of their own firm. The other thing is, is because they've locked in a fee, you know, we worked through that perception that typically architects work on a sliding percentage of the construction cost of the project. And so, there can be a perception, true or not true, that they don't have an interest in keeping the cost down because if you're based on a percentage of the cost of the project, you know...
They get more money if it costs more.
If it costs more. And so, so they, we've taken that out of the equation, you know, and we have a very, very good competitive rate. All three firms came within probably $100,000 of each other when you added apples to apples and, which adds quite a bit considering two different parts of the state and then one from Minnesota. And so, really, really a good situation, I think, for the board and for the school district.
As further prefatory remarks, this is a 24-page contract and on page 15, while we're on the subject of fees, page 50 sets forth that lump sum fee. And then, the subsequent articles talk about when that fee is paid. But how it breaks down is the total amount for the architectural fee is $3,782,300. Of that amount, 82% to be for work at the high school, which is $3,101,566. At the middle school, it's 9.27% or $350,437. And at the athletic field and the auditorium, 8.73% or $330,297.
The importance of breaking it down like that is because we do have three referendum questions and referendum dollars from each question have to only be spent on those projects. And so, the architects, as also outlined in the contract, they're required to keep essentially three sets of books on the project. So, which, you know, which, assigning things to which project, we'll be doing the same thing with construction manager firm when we assign them. So, we can know exactly what things are being billed to which project, which is a good thing for everybody to see.
And then, those architect payments are to be paid. It's broken out 15% at the schematic design stage, 18% on design development documents, 39% for the working drawings, and then 4% during the bidding phase, which we hope is at the, the middle school would be in like this fall, October to December. And the, at the high school would be next March, April.
We would anticipate bidding at the middle school and looking at their schedule being as early as possibly end of August with breaking ground on middle school being in October. We think that almost all of the bid packages will be done and bid on at the high school by the end of January or at least the initial excavation, civil stuff done. So, that gives those contractors about two months to mobilize and be ready to go since the ground falls in March.
Is there any language in here or have you discussed with them at all via, how many, how much of this work will be done, could possibly be done by local contractors?
Yeah, it's going to be up to them, who they want to use and how much local they can use. As far as, are you talking about the architect's work or the...
I'm talking about the subcontracting work.
Yeah, so, the plan would be to have, break our bid packages down into smaller packages to give more people more opportunities to bid on it. And the other thing is, because it's such a large project, there are not as many companies that have the capacity to be able to handle everything or to get bonded to be able to handle an entire bid package such as this.
Well, and this is a very good point that you raised, Sandy, is that the, you know, this contract is for architectural engineering services.
Right.
It's not for general contracting services. And we've, I think we've talked about, we haven't, I don't know, there's been a formal motion, but we're intending to proceed with all this and that's at least what we told the public, not with a general contractor concept, but rather with a construction manager. So, we act as our own contractor.
Yeah, and the real, the basis behind that is a general contractor would cut... Yeah, and the real, the basis behind that is a general contractor would come in and they would put all the bids together and we would just have one contract with that general contractor. Well, you know, it would really limit who could do the work because to have a general contractor that has the ability to get bonded for essentially ninety-plus million dollars for the work, there are very few off there that can do it. So, but what we will have is, we will probably have anywhere from fifty to a hundred and fifty contracts individually between, they're called prime contractors and the actual school district. So, between the company that we're buying our flooring from and the school district, the company that's installing HVAC in the school district, the company that's doing electrical in the school district, you know, all those different things will be in between, directly between the district and those individuals. And the CM will act as our fiduciary on the process, on the project, ensuring that the installation, the construction, and also the design is done, is done well. The construction and installation, they're ensuring that the, at the way the architects drew it up, they're then also looking at what the architects are drawing up and looking for ways to either do it more efficiently, more inexpensively, or just a better building technique if they happen to be aware of. So, they work in conjunction with one another, but the CM really is kind of our overseer of the entire project.
And they're the ones that go off to try to get the bids from the...
They will help us put the bids together, yeah. That's all part of their package. They will write the bid specs and they'll work with the architects on the bid specs and then they will also vet the potential bidders so that, you know, sometimes people will say, well, I'm going to come in with this really low bid and everybody wants to know, why is the board not taking that low bid? Well, it might be that that contractor actually doesn't have the capacity to do the work, you know. I mean, when you start thinking about putting down a half a million square feet of flooring or something along those lines, that's not the average carpet installer or tile installer can do that. I mean, so, what they will do is they'll make sure that whoever is bidding on it is pre-qualified is what they call it and making sure that they are able to handle the job in which we're asking them to do.
The construction manager is not part of this contract, right?
No, this is just architectural services.
So, then we have to hire them separately.
The CM contract will be coming sometime this summer.
Okay.
The architect will help us select a CM firm.
Okay.
I had a couple of questions on Article seven, the conform to budget part. How common is it that there's so many changes or things, interferences happen that, that then there's a conflict or we have to pay more or something like that? Is that a very common thing once these contracts are set up?
Wait, before, come on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nick, before you answer that, and before we go to Article seven, I just wanted to finish the payments, because we started talking about the architect payments. And so, where I got, where we got caught up was in the bidding phase, because we started talking about the difference between a construction manager and a general contractor. So, essentially, the architect and will be earning seventy, roughly seventy-five percent of their fee, exactly seventy-six percent prior to the construction phase, starting on each of these individual projects. During the construction phase, the architect then gets nineteen percent of the fee and then the final five percent is withheld until...
Project's done.
The project's all the way done. So, anyway, with that, I just wanted to make sure people understood this overlap between the architect, engineering services, and the construction manager, is they're actually working together for the bulk of the contract, which is, would be section C through F.
The majority of their work is done prior to construction.
Right.
I mean, it's all the blueprints and everything else associated with it.
But it's a three-stage kind of design for the documents. You go from schematic to design, then working drawings, which is what gets, the thing stuff gets bid off of, as I understand.
Yep.
All right, so go to Article seven then, and Sue has the question.
Well, I just was wondering about complications and additional costs and so on. I just wondered how often that occurs. I mean, I don't have any experience in this, but maybe Rob does or you do or...
Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a built-in about five percent contingency is what we've started with. I think Matt addressed this a little bit during the, during the interview process. There's, there's three different things that he said that basically are work contingencies happen, you know, if things aren't designed, you know, something gets missed in design, the owner wants to change the scope of the project, or if you tear into a wall or you dig into the ground and you find something you didn't know was going to be there. You know, we start digging in the front of the high school and find an old foundation that's not on any of the plans and all of a sudden we have to spend an extra twenty or thirty thousand dollars to tear it out.
For sales?
You know, so, those are the kind of things we don't know. Or, yeah, we think we know where all the asbestos is and then all of a sudden we tear into something and there's more asbestos. And so, that's where, that's where you're going to get into some of those types of things. When the scope of the project changes, that's when we would pay additional money. When the scope doesn't change, so for example, it goes out to bid and it's too high, bids come back higher than what we had money. So, then in this contract, the architect agrees to redesign things and reduce the scope of the project at no cost to us as far as their design fees, which typically they charge like an hourly rate and things along those lines. So, they obviously want to get it right the first time, so they're not spending hours and hours and hours redesigning things they've already designed.
Which I think is a great segue to the reasons that we selected Bray. And we asked really all three firms to give us their history of bringing projects in on time and under budget and Bray's record in that regard was stellar. They've had several projects, obviously, very large projects, but some of which they did not do the pre-referendum budget or a separate firm did that. So, but they still overall had an excellent record. With that, I mean, I'll open up to other board comments as to, you know, why the motion includes Bray Architectist.
Well, I would just comment that the thing about the Bray price that I liked was that it was all-inclusive. There weren't, there are no surprises.
Everything's in there.
Pretty much, no surprises, everything is in there. And the others had to kind of think about what's all included because part of what they were saying was, well, if this happens and this happens, then it would be more. But Bray was everything. That was one of the things that I liked about, about the way they were going to handle it. The other thing is that I just felt that they had a superior design. I was very happy with the new design. You all know that I haven't been real happy with the old design and I have vocalized that, but this new design, honestly, it pretty much took my breath away when I saw it. I was like, whoa. I don't know where they came up with this redesign, but it was, it was going to be phenomenal. And I think when we go to the public and say, this is how much money you gave us to spend and this is what we spent it on, they're going to say, wow. There's a huge wow factor to the Bray design that I didn't see so much in the other designs. And I think a wow factor is important when you're spending this kind of public money.
Absolutely. Well, I think, and not only that, it showed that they weren't complacent. They didn't just rest on what they did for the pre-referendum stuff. They obviously put a lot of time into, you know, refining it.
Yeah, there were some changes that they had made from the pre-referendum plan to now that was reflective of things that we had said to them as board members and as collectively as a board. And I liked that too, that they didn't just ignore that and say, well, this is what we did and what we're going to go with. They really took to heart what we had said to them and made the changes that, that we suggested.
Which bodes well for our design process that we're going to be doing over the next four months is that commitment, Matt reiterated it, that Matt Wolford reiterated from Bray that, you know, they want to listen to us. Even though this is something they've put some time into their new design, they're willing to change that even if it's some, you know, to better fit Hudson programs.
For me, one of the things I liked most was the communication, not just with the board members, but obviously with staff. They listened to staff, they listened to the board, and they listened to the public. And they feel that there's a significant amount of time that's going to be needed to keep the public involved in this project. I mean, it's, I felt like they represented us well pre-referendum. I feel like some of the materials that they brought and showed us and how they're going to continue to communicate with the public is going to be helpful to keep the public involved in this project. It's a, it's a community project. It's just, it's not just a board project or a school district project, it's our community's project.
You're, I, you're right. And keeping the public involved and informed is going to be really important through the whole thing, so that they know what we're doing, what we're spending the money on, the progress that we're making.
Well, and I think that that's a comment that Matt made too, was having been involved in the pre-referendum stuff and how, what kind of listening they did and involving the community. They really assisted us quite a bit. And so, as much as there was, if there was any prejudice going in for me individually was the fact that they did such a good job with the pre-referendum stuff. It was going to be something that somebody would have to have a clearly better, but yet Bray, I thought, still was better, all things being equal and putting, setting aside the pre-referendum service, which I thought was excellent.
You know, with, I mean, a couple of things. Nick, first off, kudos to you and the team on the contract. It's absolutely fantastic that we're able to protect the interests of the district and our community, or so than a typical AIA document. So, again, congratulations and good work there. Something else that we talked about, you and I, as pertains to the contract, was around value engineering. If in fact, God forbid, we go over budget from a bidding perspective, many times these contracts, because they lean heavily towards the architect, the district doesn't have a lot of say in some of those changes, which many times take away the intent of the design. This, this contract does a nice job protecting the interests of the districts that we have more of a say in, in what is, what happens in that rebid. As it pertains to Bray, and as you all know, and I said this in closed session, I've been critical of Bray to some degree, but more so overall the process. And this, specifically this project is probably the largest retrofit project that the state, I think, correct me if I'm not mistaken, has ever seen. There's, there's so many things potentially that could go left on us and a lot of things that we don't know. It's not a greenfield project, it's not a brand-new building. And Bray listened, you know, they had, they added a team member, a third party, McManus, and I forget the name of the organization, to handle peer reviews, to make sure that the specifications in the design are, are going to be, will have minimal faults, which is nice to start. I haven't seen that in other projects. Our referendum included a commissioning process after the fact. So, we will be able to make sure that all of the systems work as designed, as intended. If something fails, it won't be failure on, waiting for something to just stop working. It's an active commissioning process to make sure everything works as designed.
Sure.
And so, all in all, I think from a retrofit perspective, nobody's perfect, things will, will happen. But ultimately, we're doing everything we possibly can to make sure that things happen within budget and that we're able to deliver systems. And, you know, we can lead a solid project afterwards. So, kudos to Bray for listening.
I would also like to point out for the public that references were checked prior to the interviews even being conducted and that Dr. Nick conducted those himself and you went kind of above and beyond the stated references and you contacted people from other projects.
Yeah, so, I called other districts that they didn't necessarily list on their, on their reference sheets, you know, for all three firms, but that I knew they had done work for. And all three firms had, had very good references and they're all three very reputable firms. And so, yeah, I think, you know, Bray's references were outstanding and they were able to answer your questions, even when it came to challenges associated with projects that they've had and be able to go through those kind of things as well.
I'd like to just make a design comment. I, I can't believe in this final design that they had, the integration and consolidation of lots of little bits and pieces. I, I think you know that word, the stult, where the parts incorporated into a whole. But even something as simple as, I, I don't think it's simple, but taking the, the concession stand bathrooms, instead of having it being this little decentralized building with far more capacity for being vandalized or, or even getting supplies there from delivery trucks and so on, they simply moved it and made it tangent to the building. And so, now you have security, you have access, people can bring, you know, pop or whatever, soda to it. I, I mean, that is just one isolated example of how integrated all the elements that we wanted for this building have come together. And I also would like to just comment on his word, calling the entrance a beacon. And I think you probably noticed that everything else then was laid out as concentric circles from that, which for me personally seems like there's an energy going out and an energy going in. And even the staircase and the little rotunda building, rotunda shape. I, I just feel like it's such a complete statement. It's like it's fine-tuned. And it's like, well, I won't go on to my other analogies, but anyway, I just can only say superlatives. And I'm glad we saved them for our final presentation.
Well, I think it's notable too, and whether it's Bray or any of the other two, this is just concept yet. You know, there's, there's district participation.
Sure.
I mean, and as a starting point, I think to everybody's point, it's a, it's a fantastic place to start, but then we'll have an opportunity to build on those ideas.
Tweak it and make it other, do other things with it.
Yeah.
Well, I think now it's a matter, the tweaking will be a matter of where can you do two things that is going to, for the price of one or one, price of, you know, to reduce costs because I think that they'll do a good job in behalf of ours. But I also like their long list of how many times we're going to end up talking to advisory groups and community and keeping them updated and so on. I, I think they have such an excellent handle on that.
Well, not only did they work with our community in the pre-referendum and expressed that willingness to continue, you know, now into the design phase, but also the willingness to work with a construction manager. I think that's what you're pointing out, is that ability to make our budget. And I noted on their design, while they provide, like Rob said, a concept, even within here, they show great flexibility. I like their design of how they have the classrooms and being able to be flexible to use the hallway space as collaborative space and academic space.
Right.
And so, it doesn't look like there's any waste, a lot less wasted space, if you will. So, I think flexibility in their design was really good. That was another point. Anyone else have something else to make? Maybe I'll come back.
I would just add one thing, that I, I came to the process, of course Bray did a great job for us pre-referendum, but when I got these three proposals, I really came to them with an open mind. I did not have any preconceived ideas that Bray was going to be where I've, the person I fell in behind. I wanted to remain objective because you don't know what the other companies will have.
Sure.
So, I honestly spent a lot of time going through everything with all my little blue stickies, looking at everything and really, really weighing all three companies. And I, I was hoping that even one of the other two would, would be able to step up to the plate. And when we got all done with the process, it was really clearly evident to me that Bray had the best design of all of them, in my opinion. And the inclusiveness of the price, that was a very big deal to me because I'm, I know how real estate overruns, overpricing or cost overruns can add on to projects. I didn't want any of that. I really, I was very grateful for the inclusiveness of their price. And that was the other big factor for me. But I want the public to know, I, I came at this with an absolutely clean slate, looking at all three of them and just decided that Bray still was where, where we needed to be.
When you, when you talk about that, the price being all-inclusive and everything, I think of the values that I really lean for and lean towards and look for, and that is the transparency and trustfulness. And one of the things that in the interview, which people are going to be able to view because they were all televised, when we asked that question, what's the biggest conflict that you ran into?
Oh.
And, you know, sometimes in job interviews, people ask, what's your greatest weakness? Oh, I just work too hard.
[laughing]
Yeah, people do that when they're up for a job interview. Well, in this case, Matt didn't give an answer like that. He focused on a specific issue that, and owned up to a mistake and explained how they did it right and went out of their way. And that's why, you know, nobody's perfect, but I've got a lot of confidence. I just think that kind of trustfulness, being open, honest, and upfront, and that's what I feel like we're getting with Bray.
Well, and one of the things is that Dr. Nick actually did verify that story. And so, not only did the owners of that project feel the same as Bray did on how they owned it, you know, Bray, Bray was forthcoming about that as well.
And you knew that before the, that board session?
Yes.
Yeah, I was impressed, you know, that, that came up in the reference checks and I know that superintendent very well. And the fact that Matt brought that up unsolicited, I thought was...
That says a lot.
Yeah, it says quite a bit because, you know, as Jamie said, a lot of times in interviews, people will try to give you a weakness or a challenge that they have that's not really a weakness and not really a challenge. So, you know, I, I thought that that, that's one thing that I think has been a very big positive for Bray as we've worked with them over the last ten months is, I think they've been, they've earned a lot of trust over the last ten months. They, they followed up and done what they said they were going to do. So, I think that, that definitely helps.
Well, and then when it comes down to this contract, you know, while they have their fee and, you know, we accepted their proposal, they also have accepted our contract. I don't know, all the board members probably have seen that Matt has electronically signed the contract and for our public, they wouldn't know that because, but he's already accepted the terms and he's... the terms and he's accepted basically our terms. It's not like we had to negotiate off and into their...
We made no adjustments to our contract.
Right.
So, they accepted all terms, even after, you know, we talked with them about it last week and they had some questions, and I said, "These are really kind of are, are non-negotiables on some of these things." And the only, the only tweak we did make was in the payment schedule, you know, the percentages that are paid out at different phases. Part of the reason is, is because the high school project's such a long project that some of those engineers will be doing work this summer, but it won't actually be, some of that work that they're doing this summer on that project might not actually be constructed for almost two and a half years. And so, but their work on it is already done.
Sure, right.
And so, to have them have to sit there and carry that lack of payment, you know, for that long is, is not, is not reasonable. And so, you know, we, we worked with them on it, we still held firm on our five percent retainers. They said, "Do you realize that's like a hundred and eighty thousand dollars?" And I said, "Yeah, yeah, we know that's, that's what it is." And we figured that's enough to keep you in the game for, you know, all the way through and so...
What did we do about it?
The other thing on this contract that's different, I wanna, I wanna highlight is, we wrote this contract with a two-year, a two-year warranty on it. Standard contracts usually have a twelve-month warranty. We have actually eleven-month walkthrough and then a twenty-two-month walkthrough. So, the expectation is that there's a two-year warranty. And some people say, "Well, two years doesn't seem like much on a project this big," but that's double what most, most, most would be. And so, usually...
And those periods of time commence after final completion in 2019.
Final completion. It kicks in and it's spelled out in here, as soon as we have final acceptance of the project, that's when, that's when the clock starts.
Nick, final acceptance or substantial completion?
Um, I'll have to look, I'll have to look and see. Substantial, the biggest difference between substantial completion and final acceptance will be the punch list type of items, so I'll have to look and see which, which term we used in there. But it won't be like it'll start, "Well, they're still renovating phase nine and the..."
But punch list items are typically done within sixty, ninety days of very early.
Yeah, but I mean, they're, they're typically things like, okay, there's, we still need to touch up this wall here, this piece of base is missing, or this cabinet's crooked. It's not, hey, you still have to remodel the side terms, you know? So, that, I mean, that would all be done prior to starting the clock ticking.
What did we do with the insurance that we talked about?
Uh, they are gonna carry the insurance that we expected them to carry. So, their price was inclusive of that.
Yeah.
They had a line item for a reduction.
The ninety thousand was, that ninety thousand was, if we wanted to reduce the amount of insurance, we expected them to carry.
Nick, for, for... We are, just to be clear, because we've got, again, viewers, that we're expecting, the, the industry standard had been two million dollars worth of liability insurance and we're requiring five.
Yeah, at least five, you know, our insurance agent said, you know, he wouldn't be opposed to going to ten. Well, it's, it's a tremendous amount of coverage to carry. They typically only carry two, so, and not only do they have to carry it, for one year, they have to usually carry it for about six years. They have to carry it for the duration of the project and then for several years after the project as well. So, it's about fifteen thousand dollars additional a year. They figured for six years, it was gonna be about an extra ninety thousand. They said if we were willing to reduce it down to the two million, they would chop ninety thousand dollars off of their price. It just, it's too big of a gamble that I don't think it's, I just don't think it's worth it in the district's best interest.
So, for the, for the sake of the folks at home, that difference, that three-million-dollar difference, why was that an issue to begin with?
Um, so, for example, if you have a, a design flaw in the building, so let's say where the brick wall meets the flashing of the roof and there's a design flaw there and water's getting up underneath there and that wall gets molded, you know, if we all of a sudden have to eradicate that building of mold and we're talking about a four-hundred-thousand square foot building, if it's all over the building, you're talking millions of dollars worth of cost, not to mention if you have to close the building for a year or something like that in red space somewhere else. So, the question I asked Bray when we were talking about it is, you know, this is what we would like, but are you even comfortable with only five million dollars worth of coverage on a project this, this massive? I asked that of every firm and they're all, of course, "Oh, yeah, you know, we don't have those kind of issues." Well, you never do until you do.
Until you get it right.
Because really, that, that's the big thing, you know? Projects like this are very complicated, as you said, and there's lots of opportunities for unintentional things to happen. And so, we wanted to just make sure the district's protected against those things. And so, the insurance carrier thought that that would be ample amount of coverage for them to carry, because if there's, if there's multiple people involved in it, you know, it wouldn't just be the architect. It could also be the installer, it could be, you know, CM involved in that law. I mean, there could be a variety of people in the lawsuit, right, when that happens?
Thank you.
Mr. President, just one quick question on Article eight of the contract. It specifies that the construction documents, regardless of the media or format, as instruments of service are the property of the owner. I just wanna make sure we're gonna get these documents in CAD.
What's that?
So, in the event that, you know, twenty years down the road, we're gonna do another construction project and we don't hire Bray, having somebody have to recreate the wheel and not have them in CAD?
So, so what we have, what we've, it's actually spelled out in, in one of the, I gotta figure out which article it is, but what they have to provide us, and the electronic, the electronic version of the documents is at our choosing.
Okay.
So, what we didn't want to have happen was, they only provide us electronic documents, let's say it's, it's in a file format created by an arc, like I said, like a CAD, that we don't own, and all of a sudden now we can't access those files. We'd spend a lot of money to buy that program.
Sure.
So, we would probably, it, it is spelled out there that, you know, basically electronically we get to specify how we want them, so we will probably ask for them in a CAD file and a PDF file and probably a Rich Tex file, so that we have everything covered for the duration. Plus, we require in here four hard copies of each project on top of that, and we require them to provide up to a hundred sets of, of construction documents also.
Construction docs. Perfect, thank you.
And speaking of that, sets of construction documents, wasn't there something also in here that if more of the firms, entities that are doing bids get their drawings electronically, then we're gonna have a reduced printing budget?
Yes, so Bray has in here, they've built twenty thousand dollars into their fee for printing cost of a hundred sets of construction documents. For every set, we do not need them to print for us, we get a two-hundred-dollar credit back, is how it works. So, yeah, it used to be about a hundred sets would be about what it would take to do a project this size, but now what's happening is a lot of these contractors are doing everything electronic and they prefer to have them electronic, but we still wanted to build that in there so that, you know, some of the things that can happen on these types of contracts is, it's all the reimbursables that can really start to add up, as Sandy talked about earlier. And so, that's why we wanted a contract that was really all-inclusive. And they actually, they went out of their way to say, "Hey, if we built twenty thousand into our contract and if we don't, if we don't use that much printing, we don't think it's right for us to keep the money, we're gonna credit it back to you." That wasn't something we asked for, that was something that they, they said this is how we would like to operate, so.
Great.
Anything else then, either whether it's on the selection of Bray or on the wording of the contract, which has been vetted by multiple attorneys?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any other comments to be made?
I don't have any.
Hearing none, then I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of approving the contract with Bray?
Does this have to be a vote?
Yes.
We'll have a vote?
Yes.
I think it does have.
Okay. Then we'll start with Rob.
Brown, I.
Goodbye.
Gritti, I. Katasa.
Johnson, yes.
Rob's an I. We got Bruce.
Bruce?
Hans is an I.
Okay, we have a seven-o vote, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.